Meetings called to order tonight. Kip Andrews is sick, President Kip Andrews, so I'll be filling in for him tonight. So roll call.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Andrews. Councilman Wells.
All right, let's see. All right, we're going into, see the, let's see. Old businesses.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. So we had.
Item one.
All right, item one, public hearing.
Orders to amend the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget to transfer $23,893 from general administration TBD nonprofit partners to be returned to the general fund balance. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes, so this was introduced at the last meeting. It's just to take some remaining funds that were allocated in a nonprofit partners fund to put back into the general fund as we discussed in multiple council meetings.
Any, anyone here tonight in the public that would like to speak? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Hello, Brandy Jones, 811 Mooney Hammond, LA.
How you doing, you morning?
Hello, I'm doing fine. So I am here basically like I was on at our last council meeting to state that these, that the funds remain in the nonprofit funding and also be awarded to UMX. I'm not even understanding why they're not because UMX has done a lot for the city of Hammond. We're the same organization that rolled to Richmond with, you know, it was paid through the city funds, through citizens funds for our room and our airfare because of us being awarded the National Main Street Award because of the inclusion that UMX brought. We're the same organization that was asked to come and do a video for the millage vote that was awarded. We've done so much for the city of Hammond and we're building economic growth. We're supporting several businesses in the exact same thing that is in the city of Hammond's action plan is saying that you guys want to build this economic growth. That's exactly what the urban market experience is doing. And I have businesses that are here that want to speak to you all because one of them in particular is on our waitlist and needs the services because whenever we request for this funding, it's not for UMX particularly. We're not asking for assistance with light bills. We're not asking for assistance for air conditioning to be fixed, other things like that. We're asking for funding to support the services so that these businesses can receive services free of charge to get their business and actually build the economic growth here in Hammond. So if you guys would like to, um, come on this.
You go one at a time, I guess. Well, they can all come up, but I mean whoever's gonna speak, just step up one at a time. All right. State your name and address.
My name's Jennifer Carpenter. We're with Jay and I Transfers LLC and we would like the services. We're actually one of the ones that's for the nonprofit trying to get services to actually help us out with our business to help it grow economically. And, um, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
No, you fine.
Sorry, this is.
No, that's fine.
This is my old man, Harold. He's also co-owner of the business, Jana.
Would you like to speak?
She said everything.
Okay.
Yes, but we really need this, sir. You know, for it to grow, everything get back better for us and we just really need it. Spend our business more and, you know, it good for us and we really need this, sir.
Okay.
We really do.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Hughes. I'm the owner of Sweets and More by Sharon LLC.
Can you state your address, please? Yeah.
502 South First Street.
Thank you.
I'm currently located in Amity, Louisiana, getting ready to open a second location in Hammond, Louisiana. I've been with UMX for quite a long time. They have been a great asset to my business as far as doing business plans, you know, different funding and just different things and just would like to say that we, we, we need this, you know, the small businesses, we know we're thriving on UMX.
Ms. Sharon, how long you been with UMX?
I've been with UMX, oh, I don't know how many years, but pretty much since they started. We were downtown Hammond with, you know, at the market, doing the market with them, loading up my car before I even got the brick and mortar, loading up my car, going setting up the table, you know, at the Tanjapahoa Heritage Center. We were there and we've been pretty much on the, on the trail with them everywhere they have been. And they have, like I said, they've been a great assets to Sweets and More by Sharon.
Yeah, and your cookies. I like your cookies, by the way.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ashanti McLaurin Smith. I'm at 15312 Stone Throw Circle in Hammond, Louisiana. I'm here with the McLaurin Academy of Contemporary Arts. It's a new dance studio that is offered here in the city of Hammond across the street from Southeastern. It's a ballroom. I am on the waiting list to get more in collect with the urban black market and it's taken a while. It's taken a while and I know she wanted me to come up here and speak, but the city and the kids, I'm a teacher at heart, so the kids need it. The kids need an avenue to have a let out. The kids need an avenue to have a way to express their minds, express themselves. And so that's what I want to offer for Hammond is for my kids to be able to use their bodies, use their dance educational minds to be able to express themselves, not just, you know, in the curriculum, but also with their bodies. So I'm hoping to continue to be able to work with this lovely business because I know I have so much to offer. Not only is it educated here at Tanjapahoa, but, um, for me, it's the kids. The kids need this avenue to let out, let go and know how to do it in an appropriate manner. I think that's it.
Ma'am, what's your name again?
Ashanti McLaurin Smith.
Okay, I'm gonna say Ms. Smith.
That's fine.
Okay. Uh, no, I got a chance to see your kids dance one time.
Okay.
And, and I'm gonna say this here, and what people ought to realize, anytime you finding something, somebody or someone to take time to work with kids, I'd rather for them kids to go to her before they go to Florida Parish. This what we can stop. Let the kids go to her before they go to Florida Parish, yeah. And, and from Florida Parish, Florida Parish setting them up for jail. Let them go to her first before they go to Florida Parish and then the jail. So thank you so much for what all you doing for the kids and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Anthony Alexander. Our company in Amity, Louisiana. Just want to share a little insight that UMX did for our business. A lot of different resources they helped us on. And my wife is currently, she couldn't be here. She's down there now in New Orleans at an event right now due to UMX. And, um, we in a government contract that's facing and if it wasn't for UMX, providing all the information and resources, we wouldn't be there. So thank you so much for helping our company expand and I'm just looking forward to do more business with UMX.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bishop E. Renee Solei, 42798 Scarlet Circle, Hammond, Louisiana, 70403. Currently, I am the program manager, Mixon Clayton Bridge Builders Memorial Foundation, 902 West Coleman Avenue. I have worked with UMX. I have done several workshops to assist these businesses in moving forward and growing. And Mayor Panan Pinto knows my work. When he was CAO for Mayor Foster and Robbie Miller was executive director of the Heidi Board, we presented an economic development plan to address what? Poverty in Hammond. According to the US Census, we have a 37% poverty rate in the city. That is unacceptable. What's worse, we don't have a plan to address it. And don't tell me you do because I work the streets. I'm in the community. I know the programs and I don't see any programs, not this year, not last year, not since 2012. If you don't like what we're doing, offer something better. UMX is doing something better. You look at how New Orleans recovered. How did they recover? They built a entrepreneur ecosystem. They built grassroots businesses. Those grassroots businesses took off and they employed local people and they spent their money in the city of New Orleans. Why wouldn't you support something like that? It's a win-win. It's a win-win. I don't understand why you wouldn't want to create what she's already done, an entrepreneur ecosystem. You look at all the cities across America who are thriving. They've changed their business model and they've embraced this entrepreneur ecosystem because it is the future of employment and sustainable economies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Dominic, 43, Pine Square, Hammond. I didn't come here to talk on behalf of UMX, but I will share some information. And I just want to address something that Councilman Wells said about Florida Parishes. And I'm not here speaking on behalf of the Detention Center as well, but I am the executive director of the Juvenile Detention Center. And I just want to address what you said about us setting kids up for jail. I don't know how you meant that, but on its face, I want to share that that's not what we do. We try to work very hard in instilling positive life skills in kids that come out to the center. If you read any of the recent articles or past articles about the Detention Center, we're a national model and there's no other detention center or long-term placement in the state of Louisiana like us. Now to UMX. Ms. Wells has come out to my Detention Center. She's met with me. I've also met with her off-site to talk about what they do at UMX, how they can positively impact kids. I know that she started young entrepreneurships for kids in our community. I'm supportive of that. I'm supportive of what UMX does and what they're doing in the community. Again, I'm not here to advocate for or against any, any money that you want to grant that organization, but I do want to say from my perspective, they have been doing good things in the community and I just wanted to kind of clarify some of the things that we do on behalf of the Detention Center. Thank you.
Well, sir, why you up here? How many times your group, because you done been up here before by getting money from the city, right?
No, sir.
You never been up here?
I've never.
You never spoke on behalf of no group?
I've never come here to ask money from the city. We're funded by a tax millage. It's a property tax. That's over 10 years. It's a three-mill tax. That's our primary source of funding. We don't really get any grants or anything like.
No, I know who you funded by. Yeah. But I'm saying, you haven't come up here for no group.
No, sir.
Speaking on behalf of some money.
No, sir, I've not.
Okay. And by the way, the people that y'all have in y'all facility, most of them come from my neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
And so, and that's why I can sit here and tell you from experience. I'm not, I know some of the things y'all do. I know the driving ed course y'all come up with, but don't take things personal because guess what? Those kids come out my neighborhood, yeah, they need to be rehabilitated. They need a lot of help. And I'm gonna say it again, I wish they start with her before they get to you. And when they leave you, they going to jail. So we not gonna sit here and go back and forth, but they got good kids, they got bad kids. And some of the worst ones that y'all have come out of District 3. We know their names, yeah, from everything, from the shooting to setting things on fire. So you know what I'm talking about? Yeah, those are kids come out of my neighborhood. Those are kids that I want to go to her before they get to you. Because one thing I learned, if I didn't learn nothing else, recess is very important for kids. They get a chance to get all that out of them. So when they sit in class, the teacher don't have a problem. Yeah, that's what I see. So if you got offended, if you take it any kind of way, I apologize.
No, sir. I didn't, I didn't get offended.
Okay.
For the audience, I just wanted to clarify what you do at the center.
Okay.
Well, I'm glad you did clarify, but I took it as I thought he was saying that that would prevent them, that would be another avenue for them to, to not have to go to juvenile detention, you know, to your facility. That was keeping them busy to like, hopefully they won't have to go see you over there.
Correct.
And that's kind of how, you know, I took the comment to, you know, the lady here for UMX. So, but yeah, I'm glad to hear about, you know, your facility and everything else and.
I took, I took the comment that way too. And then he followed it with, we set them up for adult jail. And that's not what we do. And I just wanted to clarify.
No, and that's great. So.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Brandy Jones, 811 Mooney Avenue. So I just wanted to come back after you guys heard their, um, testimonies and their request for these funds to just reiterate that UMX has not sent one invoice for funding for anything relating to us, whether it's bills, assistance, or any of that. Only assistance we, every, every dime that we have gotten from the city has went to the citizens, never to anything for us. We, we partnered with Ms. Renee Solei, something I came to you guys three years ago, asking about doing an incubator for businesses. I couldn't get it from the city of Hammond. I found it on my own. We have incubator on West Thomas Street that be coming and you guys be hearing about it soon. Melody addresses everything lifted up the city of Hammond. So it's not for UMX. It's not something that we need. It's something that the citizens need. Every dime in Lacy Kenneth has never came to any bills, anything that UMX needs because we take care of ourselves. It's the citizens that you're, that the funding is going to help, the businesses and to build economic development. And that's what we've been doing. We've received awards. Just, we've been in business three years, only received funding one time and we've accomplished more than majority of any other nonprofit that you guys probably have ever done because I've done the research. So I'm not understanding why I'm here. I feel like this is something that just should be cut and dry.
How much did y'all receive last?
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All right. Anybody, anybody else in the audience who wants to speak about UMX or Ford or any other comments? Okay. Thank, thank you.
Going into regular session.
Yep.
Into the regular session.
Yep, going to, let's move on to the regular session.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Andrews. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells. Councilman DiViterio.
Present. All right. All right, let's see prayer. Prayer tonight, um, Ron Matthews. Would you be willing to say prayer, lead us tonight?
No. Let us pray. Precious Father, God, we thank you for your love, your kindness and your tender mercy. Ask you to be with us, be with us all as we go through this meeting tonight. Lead us and guide us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance now. All veterans and active military, please render the proper salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and justice broad.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ron. All right. Approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 23rd, 2023.
Second.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any presentations tonight? I don't, I don't think I'm aware of any. Not I'm on the agenda, but if I'm leaving anybody out tonight, please let me know. All right. No presentations, all right. So moving along to final adoption of an ordinance.
Final adoption of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget to transfer $23,893 from the general administration TBD nonprofit partners to be returned to the general fund balance, general hundred fund balance.
Well.
Excuse me, could I say something, please?
Go ahead.
Okay. I called to tell then, uh, Ms. Brandy, how much y'all received last year?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand. And I'm gonna bring it up. I asked in July to take all the money out for the nonprofit, but we didn't take it out in July. And now it's coming back to bite us again. My recommendation, just me, we done gave nonprofit groups already money. And I don't think it's fair to sit here, money that we already had in the budget, to take it out of the budget because Ms. Brandy asking for it and we all heard what she said and what all she done done. And I mean, Ms. Brandy done went out of state and brought her award back, which the mayor went out of state with her. Councilwoman Gonzalez went out of state with her. And President Kip went out of state with her. And to this day, the city still benefit from that. Not the city, but downtown benefit from that. And it's like, to me, I don't think it's fair. Last year, we gave her 25 and last year was the first time we ever gave her money. So what we saying, everything she done done for the city, that we done already put this money to the side. And I even asked that night to, to give it to UMX. The night we gave it to the Children Museum, we gave them $70,000 in which the Black Heritage, we gave them $50,000. And on the record, I want to get, Ms. Lacy, a public request, how much money that we done gave the Children Museum since they been in existence? And I know you can't give me that total right now, can you? I know you can't. I know.
Sorry, yeah.
I know, I know you can't. I know. But what I'm saying is, the Children Museum done got over a million dollars. Yeah, I know. They done got over a million dollars. It started with Ms. Kathy when she was the city council lady. And I'm just saying, this a new group. You heard what the young lady said about the kids dancing. And, and what I like about it, she got boys and girls that's dancing in her group. And I'm gonna say this here, far as the kids look like me, they need somewhere to go. They have so much energy and they can't get it from their parents. The parents have to work. And for her to take time out to do what she do, and she have a, she have a love for it. And Ms. Brandy got a love for what she do. I think we need to just give her the money. My opinion. So, Ms. Gonzalez, I know you said this wasn't you who did this, but we didn't take it out with, when we were supposed to take it out. And so these are things that come back and bite you. That's my recommendation. So I don't want to take the money out. I prefer to give it to UMX.
We, we can certainly not pass this, this budget change and just leave the money there. But that's possible. I mean, this is only on the agenda because it's something we all talked about.
The, um, okay. So the, uh, all right, so here. So is there a motion on there of him wanting to amend what's, what's going on here right now or?
What's on the table right now is to amend the budget.
Yeah.
Taking the money out of the nonprofit partner account into the general fund.
Yeah.
If, if you think you might want to spend that money for a nonprofit, you'd vote against this ordinance. Now, the issue of awarding it to someone, UMX or someone else, is not on the agenda as it is now.
Yeah.
You need to amend the agenda if you want to, if you want to do that.
Yeah, okay.
So the way it's rolled up now, and if I don't want to send it back to the general fund, I just vote no, right?
If, if somebody makes a motion and if there's a second.
Okay.
Or you can make a motion to deny the ordinance.
Okay. Well, I want to make a motion to deny the ordinance.
Councilman Wells.
You need a second.
Okay.
Second. That was Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Here's Al's second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Okay, now, Mr. Andre, now, what do I need to do to award UMX the money tonight?
You would make, need to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add an item, to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with UMX. And then you just need to specify the amount.
Should we do this now or during the resolutions?
That's whatever, whatever the pleasure is of the council. First thing is you have to amend the agenda to put it on the agenda.
Okay, you want to amend the agenda?
amend the agenda to authorize.
To authorize.
The item would be to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with UMX.
Okay, that's what I want to do.
You second.
And his amendment is, is, is amending it to, to contribute?
Specify an amount.
Okay. Okay.
It doesn't specify amount yet.
Okay.
You can, you can speak to that when it comes up for discussion.
I got you.
If it's amended.
Okay.
We need a second.
Second to that motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
And a motion to amend the agenda does require unanimous vote of all council members present.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
So now the, uh, agenda's amended to add that item.
Okay. So, in order to leave a hundred dollars in there, I wanna give, I would like to give twenty-three thousand dollars and keep the nine hundred eighty-three dollars. Eight, eight hundred ninety-three dollars, add that back to the general fund with the hundred dollars already. So how would I do that?
So you'd make a motion to authorize the mayor to en, enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with UMX for the, uh, amount of twenty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, that's what I wanna do.
But Andre, this wouldn't move the other money to the general fund.
Well, what, what you're doing is you're taking the money out of the nonprofit partners account.
And you would just leave that, that balance be sitting there, and eventually it just have to be moved, or it could sit there, or it could be moved, correct?
Correct.
It doesn't have to be moved or done anything with, yeah.
Yeah, this, this is taking twenty-three thousand out of the nonprofit partners account.
Why don't you just give them the full amount?
Okay, so, so give the, uh, so give the twenty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars?
Eight hundred and ninety-three.
Okay, well, what about that hundred dollar balance I keep looking at?
That's not a, that, that's the number of the balance fund.
Okay, so it's twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the mayor recommend get a whole amount.
Okay, so you just need a second.
I'm gonna, I just, I just wanna make a comment here. You know, this is moving down. They had twenty-five thousand before. Um, you know, I, I feel that there really wasn't as much direction with all the nonprofits set up policy-wise. Uh, I, I'm, I'm not a real, you know, um, big fan of moving money up and down, up and down in a nonprofit. Um, you know, one, one had a plan, you know, one was on a step-down tier plan, and that's kinda why I felt that way with the non, uh, with the Discovery Center. Um, you know, I, I really don't wanna open a door up for, you know, this year, get this much money, next year, get that much money, without some type of disaster or some real, real, um, deal. I think all of them should be, you know, looking to start becoming more self-sufficient as they can, working towards that, and, and not, you know, depending, you know, on, on the city, um, and having a game plan to move towards being a little more self-sufficient, um, unless there's some, some issues that they really need. Um, but, uh, but yeah, so I, I just wanted to make that, um, that comment that, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to make this an open door to continue asking for more and more every, every year. Um, because everybody wants more money, any, any, any nonprofit would. If I had one, I'd want more money as well. So, I mean, I don't fault anybody from, from asking or whatnot, and I definitely wanna help people out as much as we can. But I'm sure there's other organizations out there that need help as well, too. So, um, it's just a, it's a, seems like it's a, never a winning situation for everyone on, on this, so. Um, but, but I, I'll, I'll second that.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye. Let me also, let me also chime in that, um, next year, which is coming quickly, if we would follow the grant process that our grant committee put in place and the application they gave, I think we really need to do that. We're gonna be back here in just a few months with the same, same issue, and they, they put a lot of hard work into that. I've mentioned it a couple times.
Well, just, uh, had another comment. That group was not even really wanting, you know, the administration, everybody on here really wouldn't even want them to continue meeting, uh, after I was the one who was presenting, to try to get some committee with some kind of direction, and trying to get them to continue meeting throughout the year. So, you know, I, I'm glad they are meeting and everything, and, uh, you know, they are doing hard work. But I, I think, you know, it, it's, it's a big problem, and you pick one organization with a step-down plan, and then other ones didn't have any, that's, that's just not a, it's not a good structure there, and, uh, moving around things. And, yeah, the committee's working on it, but, um, you know, I'm glad they are, but it, it's a start. But, you know, it's just, seems like, you know, uh, they, everybody gets pressure from the community on them. When they get in these groups, things change and whatnot, and nobody wants to tell anybody no. The group doesn't want to tell anybody no, neither does the council. So, um, you know, it's just a, it's just a bad, bad situation, so. But, but anyways, if we finish that vote, we can move on to the next.
Number two, final adoption and override of mayor's veto of ordinance number two-three-five-seven-two-one, an ordinance directing the clearing of right-ofways. Mayor Pete Panapinto.
Uh, the reason why this was vetoed was because we have an arborist on staff. Uh, when there's an issue with trees, and it's in the right-ofways, we tend to take care of it. When it's on private property, we're not gonna go on private property and take care of your trees. It's the responsibility of homeowner, property owner, to take care of the trees. So I don't really see the need, uh, or the money that would take to completely clear trees throughout the city where we have the power lines. That's one of the issues. So we just need to work diligently with our arborists that we have on staff and the, and the street department, and cut the trees when it's a safety issue, if it's on the right-ofway. Um, but, uh, we have a canopy that was started many years ago with our historic Marcus Monarch, I think was his name, back in the day. And he did, uh, we did, as a city, put a lot of trees in the right-ofways where the power lines are. So we deal with that on a day-to-day basis. There are a lot of trees. When we do have storms, we will have issues, but that's nationwide, and we just have to deal with it accordingly.
Sam Nicolosi, thirty-six oh seven Highway one ninety west. I don't know if I'm understanding this correctly, mayor, but, uh, from what I'm aware, we just, uh, you know, planted trees on, in the, in the city of Hammond. And most of these trees now, people are opening their doors, they're hitting the trees. I don't know who arranged it or put it together, but there is a, a problem with these trees. Even though they, they small at the moment, and they're gonna continue growing. But I rode around today looking at the tree lines, and a lot of them are still, are hanging over the, the wires already. So what's gonna happen, those trees, energy's gonna come through and just cut them out, you know? So what I'm saying is that I think the council, uh, vote, they voted to, uh, you know, take care of that problem, from what I'm aware of. I don't understand why you vetoed it or whatever, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just, I'll just comment on that. I mean, it, it kinda got, you know, to where everybody thought they were trying to cut the live oaks and all these protected trees. That's not where it was. Um, there, there is a problem there. I mean, and what he was referring to, they planted trees down, you know, city downtown. I mean, you gotta watch them all day, they plant the trees. You go to other cities, they plant them to where the, the type of the tree, it actually branches out over the top of utility lines or any, any buildings, not into the, into the, um, communication lines. But neither here nor there, um, that it wasn't intended to have every, uh, the city cut, clear-cut the entire city on private property and everywhere else, and just have it bald. It was, it was meant for the property owner of the property that has one, not everyone. But if a property owner had a tree that was in a city servitude, they would, they would be able to, uh, recommend to, you know, be able to submit in a work order through an email, actual process on paper, and, and get in line, pretty much like a ticket. And, uh, and if it was an energy problem, well, the city would've had a list of, of those properties that they could've contacted utility companies, and then they would've saved money. Utility companies could've went and trimmed it, and it'd been an ongoing list. Um, you know, it, it drew attention. I think I've seen, you know, the, the stump grinder and some other vehicles more around downtown, and every other place ever, ever since this came up. So I'm glad it, it got a little attention, I guess, and maybe, you know, they're starting to work on trees a little more. I think another issue is, I think the city department head of, of whoever that department is, if that, if that actually, the trees and street department needs to know exactly where the servitudes start and end. Because I think that would help some confusion on whether or not to cut a tree or not to cut a tree on private property. Because I think that's, that's another issue there. Um, and who is our arborist? Who has a licensed arborist?
Robert Williams.
He has a licensed certified arborist?
Yes, he's a certified arborist.
Okay, alright. And so, um, do y'all go over the servitudes with him?
Generally, the general rule is the property side of the sidewalk is the, the servitude. But there are maps that show that different streets have different measurements from the center line to the servitude. And so as we went over it, we discussed the fact that you need to be more attentive to the fact of what that servitude is on that particular street, and just work, uh, closely together and, and keep going through the process that we have for our trees.
And I think that's extremely important, because you got an department head that you have on staff that should know all that, or researched that, and, and know where the servitude, and know that things may vary throughout the city. And if you don't know, go find out, and don't give an answer that is incorrect, and find out from somebody that knows.
And he also has a good relationship with other arborists to get second opinions a lot of times.
Anyone else that come?
I have some questions.
Yeah.
Some questions.
Absolutely.
Christine, monastery two zero eight Camilla Avenue. Um, okay, so if we have an arborist, we have a st- I gave it, I gave it. Let me, by now. Okay, so I'm just a little confused. There's an arborist, there's trees on servitude. The arborist knows where the servitude is. He can consult with other arborists. And yet, I don't know how life is on your end of the street, but on my end, we're out of electricity a lot of times because limbs have fallen. Um, and I don't know if that's the city's responsibility. I don't know if that's energy's responsibility. But I do feel like, um, it's the council, the parish council, and the administration to formulate some kind of network to curtail that a little bit. We got a stump grinder, but they still got stumps all over the place, and it's on the servitude. So I'd like to see that being put to use in my neighborhood. You know, trash still hasn't been picked up off of old Baton Rouge Highway, by the way. Ditches are full of garbage. We flood there. Limbs everywhere. Trees leaning on other trees. And I just think that, you know, as taxpayers, both city and parish, um, there needs to be some kind of, um, group effort. And it not constantly falling on the citizens. We, we pay to have that taken care of through our taxes.
Mayor, do you have a game plan on, on that going forward, like, looking at these servitudes?
And if this is not a good ordinance, we have an attorney here that can rewrite it to appease everybody.
We have a process, and the energy does, you'll see where energy comes in, and when they do cut trees, you'll see half a tree going.
Yeah.
Uh, they'll get it out of line, so.
And it's ugly, and it's ugly.
As Robin and I talked about, those trees, when they get cut, we just need to go in and cut those trees out from underneath them. But we have a canopy across Hammond that's beautiful. People love trees across South Louisiana.
It's not just about downtown, Pete. It's not just about.
Across South Louisiana, in the city of Hammond, there are trees everywhere.
I'm talking about the city limits of Hammond.
Well, there's trees everywhere.
I, I need you to take them off the west side.
I, I think she's referring more to the rural Hammond of city.
Downtown Hammond is beautiful.
More, more of the.
Our canopy streets are beautiful.
We have trees throughout the neighborhood, right around here, that are in the power lines. We have to take them one by one, and when it's unsafe, they look at them, and we address it. We have a stump grinder that's not gonna work every day. I mean, we do other things in that department. That team works very hard. And we're diligent about taking care of these trees, you know, as they come up.
Thank you.
Anyone else, uh, in the public want to speak about this?
Yeah, I do. Uh, it's amazing. For one month, I sat up here and discussed about trees in the certitude. For one month, I talked about this. I voted on it. Less than eight days, the mayor was able to veto it. But this the funny part about it. Every tree I talked about was cut now. There was a danger, and they cut down. But why I had to sit here and discuss it for a whole month, which is thirty days, and it get vetoed in less than seven days, I have an issue with that. And if we're gonna veto stuff, God knows, I don't see why I'm sitting up here voting on anything. Yeah, it's the, it's the power of the mayor, but still in all, it's communication. Ms. Lacy set up the department head, went out there and met about the tree. Department head don't know where the certitude at. Said they told me it was at the edge of the sidewalk. Yeah, whatever they called it. But anytime you paying a man over a hundred some thousand of dollars, taxpayers' dollars, yes, I have a problem with it. And he don't know where the certitude at. Yeah, I have a problem with it, because this something that the mayor, he said there and said he gonna get Chuck the engineer to come out and find it. I got a problem with it. Yeah, so sound like we got a man that we paying a hun, over a hundred thousand dollars to that don't know where the certitude at. So seem like somebody need to take him back to school, or we take some of the money back from him. It's not fair to the taxpayers. They pay a person over a hundred some thousand dollars that don't know where the certitude at. And I'm not gonna go back and forth honestly, and I'm gonna say this here. I don't have to meet with him no more. When we have a problem, Mr. Mayor, I rather for it to be you and Ms. Lacy to meet with me on these problems. Because this what's going on. Just like y'all had me to meet with him, that's how much time I waste. Just that fact. I don't have time to waste. So, once before, Mr. Mayor, I met with the guy about digging ditches out. Soon as he get out there, I can't do this, I can't do this, I can't do this, I can't do that. It's the same guy we paying a hundred thousand dollars to, to dig a ditch. Anytime you don't wanna dig a ditch, now you gonna put covers in the ditch. It's easy to dig a ditch than to use the taxpayers' money to cover the ditches. So, I can't get the ditches dug, so now we gonna use, we gonna put covers in the ditch. Every time I'm told no, let's put covers in the ditch. That's what I want.
Once again, when you're looking at the servitude, the general rule is to look at the sidewalk, and that's the general line. When I called Chuck to ask him what he had on his map for that servitude, it was ten inches more on the other side of that sidewalk on that particular street, which touched the tree. So we went in, and we took it out. Uh, ditches is twofold. You have a lot of people that will rake leaves and put them in the ditch. When it comes time to, uh, for a good rain, you have a lot of things in the ditch. So for the aspect of putting culverts, it generally helps keeping things out of the ditch, because you have grates, and a lot of times you see with these leaves and debris on top of the grates after a heavy, heavy rain, because everything goes to the grate, and then we get out there and clean that. So that's, that's an ever-going process that we have. Last meeting, I spoke with you, told you I'd call Chuck. I did that. I called you. You didn't answer. Um, so we ended up taking care of it. Um, can't really say much more about that.
Oh, no, you did a good job. No, honestly. I'm just saying this here. You took a month of my time out, talking about a tree. And by time, uh, Councilman Sam put all this together and brought it up, look at the time that he lost, and just said it was vetoed after three people voted on it. So, I mean, you can veto what you want, but I'm just saying, I can't let you and nobody else use all my time if I'm gonna be up there voting, and you gonna veto everything. So that's what I'm saying.
Once again, we have a process. Communication, like Sam said, is important, and we just work together and get things done.
And Mr. Mayor, I got you on speed dial now, so when you call me, I'm gonna answer the phone now.
Alright.
So, I got you on speed dial.
I'd like it if you'd answer when I call.
And I, and I, I think that still is a management problem, because I don't think the mayor or the administrator should have to go out there and look at a tree and a servitude you paying a department head. And this is really direct towards the public to realize what kind of problem there is out there. And this is really direct towards the public to realize what kind of problem there is out there that department head should be that capable and be able to communicate that well. And if he don't know, he needs to take then a little bit more of initiative to go ahead and look at it and say, well, let me double check on this. It doesn't look like it is, but let me go double check and go figure it out. And then come back and confirm it. And it is probably the delivery as well too. But, you know, you're not, you're not, this is an entry level position. This is a upper management position. And that's why the mayor and administration has people, should have people in department head leading roles to be able to delegate this and figure this out on their own. And that, that's, that's just a problem there. And hopefully it gets fixed, hopefully it gets better and improves. But at least, at least we got a lot of attention drawn on it. And, you know, maybe we'll see that better and drive around the neighborhood and hopefully there's a plan throughout the city to look at these servitudes and look at these power lines and communication lines throughout the city to try to keep them clean and notify the right, right people. It's not the council's job, I think, to do that. I don't think it's the mayor's job. I think, you know, the mayor delegates it, tells them, you know, the management in the role to, hey, check out these tree lines and let's get them cut and trimmed. And submit ticket orders to utility companies and, you know, not just downtown. Downtown does a good job, but all over the city. You know, a lot of my districts, most of my districts not in downtown. So we have some issues over there and our lights go out a lot. And a lot of it, the tickets that come through from energy and vegetation on the line. So anyway.
The department head does a good job. He works hard, he has a great team. If you need anything, please give me a call and I'll jump on it.
It's how-
Yeah, Sal Nacalosi. You know, we discussing this again, it's like Devon said, you know. The mayor shouldn't have to go out and do all that. You should have people that are, you know, they're supposed to be experts in their field when you're getting hired. Or you're supposed to be, you know, I was a barber. I knew how to cut hair. I didn't tell you the sidewalk is this and then ten feet from it or whatever. From what I, in my subdivision, I don't have sidewalks. So here again, we, we dealing with right of ways. These are right of ways that the city owns and the citizens maintain. That's all we dealing with. We're not dealing with cutting people's trees down on their property. That's BS. I don't know why the mayor brings this up. I mean, it's ABC. If you got the right of way, which belongs to the city, then you have the responsibility to take care of the right of way. If the guy who's in charge goes out and he doesn't take care of it, which I've already had two or three people in that category, and they tell me that this is not right and that's not right, and it's just like he said, you know. These people are not, a lot of them are not qualified, I hate to say it. They're not really qualified to do their job that they're getting paid for. And if I wasn't qualified, I wouldn't get my work done, okay? And I wouldn't get paid for it. And it's getting to be pathetic when the, when the council pass something and then the mayor within five, six, seven days vetoes it. Now, you got the power of the mayor to do what you want, but I can tell you one thing. You got three, you got five members on the council here. And if you don't work with the five members, I just think city, the city of Hammond is gonna go to hell. Thank you.
We work with them all the time. And we will work with anyone. And you don't know what you're talking about, Sal.
Yeah, I know what I'm talking about.
No, you don't. Bottom line is, we do get questions asked, will we cut a tree on somebody's property? Often, and we can't do it. Number two, the man's very qualified to do his job and he does a good job. We will work with the council anytime we are asked to.
Let me ask a question. The mayor addressed it to me mainly. I think that a lot of people have lost or walked away from the jobs of city of Hammond. They're working for the parish now. There's a lot of people that are not qualified, but they making the money. Big money. When you make a hundred thousand a year, you better know the ABCs in my book, okay? Now, Lacy, I know you, you have a tremendous amount of pressure on you because you're the mayor's right-hand man. That's just saying. If you don't know what's going on and you're not qualified in everything, nobody's qualified in everything. If I'm, if I'm a, the engineer, you know, like Chuck Spangler, he's, he's the city planner supposedly, right?
No, he's the city engineer.
Right. He's the city engineer.
Mr. Sal, we have gone over this before. If you have complaints to make about city employees, there's a time and place for that. And we need actual evidence of that. We need feedback from you. You're supposed to be calling me when you see things that you don't think are correct. But this public meeting has other business on the agenda to be addressed.
I'm aware of that. But the mayor said-
This is not a personnel evaluation forum.
Okay, but the mayor said that I was incorrect. And I wasn't incorrect. I was correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Alright, Andre, the way this reads right here, the final adoption override, so?
It's on the council agenda because the charter requires it to be on the agenda. So once the mayor vetoes an ordinance, then it goes back up on the next council agenda for the council to consider whether it wants to take a vote to override the veto. And it would take four votes of the council to override the veto.
Yeah, and then, and you would, you would have to override, you would make a motion to override the veto.
Correct.
Yeah, alright. That's fine. I make a motion to override the veto.
Second.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Leon.
So the veto stands.
Okay. Moving on to the next one.
Number three, final adoption and override of the mayor's veto of ordinance, number twenty-three, five, twenty-two, an ordinance to extend and modify the moratorium on the acceptance and processing of subdivision plans, site development plans or zoning amendments for multifamily housing within the city of Hammond for additional one hundred and eighty days. Mayor Panapinto.
Once again, we have a process. We've spent millions of dollars on our infrastructure to the sewer system. We have an engineer on staff whenever someone comes and wants to build something new, making sure that we have the facilities to be able to take on the discharge that these buildings or these developments were put in place. So right off the cuff, we have a plan. We have people in charge, especially the engineer, of what's going on with the sewer system and egress and ingress for roads. So there is a plan in place. You know, Sam had mentioned, and I heard it mentioned again, oh, you don't have a planner. But Sam mentioned at the last meeting, regardless, when we do get one, they're gonna have to learn. And they're gonna learn from who? They're gonna learn from us, who's been doing it for a while. I don't think anyone could be a better planner than someone sitting next to me who's been working with the planning department for years. So they're gonna learn from us. Sam did say it was a process, and he was correct. When we do get a planner, we did have an interview with one who's a possibility to be coming on. So hopefully we can get that worked out. He is coming on.
Well, I want to make, clarify that. I didn't mean that they were gonna learn from you, the mayor, on how to do job. You know, that wasn't it. And if that's the case, then that is not the one we want to hire. But what I'm getting at is, was taking time to look at Hammond. If they're hired on as a city planner, they're gonna have to do a little reading and a little, little updating on what does Hammond look like. Drive, or hopefully they drive around a little bit, read, read the UDC, look at things and, and actually get, you know, educated on Hammond and the planning and the needs of issues throughout the city and look at what we're doing, what's going on, what's on the projects, capital projects and different things. So more of a studying of the, of Hammond City. And it's not going to happen as soon as they hired. So that would be a process, therefore that's why that would be delayed. So if, if that was how I stated it, yeah, I wasn't meaning that they were going to have to sit in and get taught how to be a city planner through the city. So that's not what I was getting at, so.
Well, the curve, the curve is to learn just what you said. Our local ways and with the community, how it exists and what we have here.
Alright, anybody in the audience tonight that wants to speak about this? Y'all, please come to the podium.
Hello, my name's Deborah Swinson. I live at twelve Ravenwood Street in Hammond, Louisiana. One thing with what y'all were just talking about is, first of all, I would be interested in having the mayor turn over the veto because I still feel like there's still a lot of problems in the infrastructure and the sewer. We still, when it rains hard, we still have a backup. We actually have a flap in our yard so that the sewer doesn't come in our house. And we have to check the cleanouts when the water goes down, so.
This is for your entire neighborhood, correct? Woodbridge, is that where you live?
Yes. And then, and I know we have plans to work on drainage and things, but, you know, I know we'll see that. But until that scene, I would like to delay some of these, you know, projects. One of the things after what was just said is, I would like to make sure that maybe there's a public meeting with the new planner, you know, once they get in and they get their feet wet, to meet with some of the people in the area, the citizens, so that we can give them what we're concerned about, that kind of thing. So the plan that they talked about is, doesn't seem to be working in our area as far as the sewer. I have pictures from the last rainstorm where it was about four to five feet up the yards, the yards on Valmerow. It's still, the drainage is still-
The drainage you're talking about, not the sewer.
I'm talking about drainage now.
The flap is in the creek for the drainage.
Yes, but I was talking about sewer and drainage, so, yes. The other thing is, is what has been done to get the development code updated to address our concerns about drainage, sewage and traffic and that kind of thing?
We've already put a drainage line through your subdivision across the street and drained it over to the track. So we've done work over the last few years for drains there. Unfortunately, your area is low and you have two tributaries, a numbered lateral and I think it's Yellow Water Creek that runs there. What hurt us the worst was when, I believe it was Ida that came through, sat on us and then went north and sat. So when we finally started draining, the floodwaters from the north started coming through the tributaries and hit us again. And it's gonna be, you know, you have twenty inches of rain. It's gonna be a bad, there's not any amount of drainage work I truly believe that you're gonna do to ever stop that flooding, that, that amount of rain in your area. But we have done work through the engineer for drainage and sewer in that, in those two neighborhoods, Whitmore and Woodbridge.
Is it complete?
We're still having problems with the sewer.
Is it complete or is it underway right now?
No, it's, it's done.
So we're still having problems with sewage. I did ask a few other neighbors about that and they're still having problems when it rains. The toilets gurgle and things like that.
Can you give me an address? Because generally what that is, is unfortunately, what we deal with a lot is fiber optics. They don't have to give us a permit to come in. It's a federal mandate that they can come in and just bore. If you bore under the ground and you hit a water line, we see it immediately, water comes out. If you bore and you go through a sewer line, you generally see it when we have heavy rains. So if we can get the address, we can get in there and put a camera in and hopefully find where there's a break in that line.
They did that once before at our house, but it's still happening. So I'll definitely give a call and I'll let other people-
What's your address, ma'am?
Twelve Ravenwood.
So ma'am, I'm asking you a question because I had a lot of sewer issues in my area. Does it do that when it rain?
When it rains hard, the water gets somehow into the sewer line and it comes up through the pipes that we have, comes up almost into our house. So in twenty thirteen, we had the city come out and there were some roots and they did some repairs. But we also had a flap put there. So when the water is coming in the line, it, the flap does protect. It still seeps. And we have to check our sewer cleanouts, the pipes in the backyard that we had to put in ourselves so that we can make sure that we can use the water again when it, when the, you know, water goes down. So that is what we, you know, have.
Okay, for the record, ma'am, that's not normal. And I'm gonna say this here, that shouldn't take place. Was it raining or was it not raining? We had a big issue with that in District Three.
Yes.
And they was trying to get me to eat that. But I told them I can't eat that, you know.
I'd never really be able to sell my house. I mean, who wants to buy a house like that? So the other thing I wanted to ask is regarding the multifamily is, how does, like, because we have these problems already, how does letting a thousand more units or units get built while we try to work on making any improvements if we do make them?
If we didn't have the improvements made and the sewer system, water system couldn't keep up, generally the sewer system, it wouldn't be allowed from the start.
But our sewer system is not keeping up, I don't feel.
So each one of the projects is evaluated by the city engineer to understand the discharge that will come from that project, whether that discharge is stormwater from flooding or whether that discharge is sewer into the system. Those, those are all studied by the city engineer before a project is permitted to proceed. So, so those checks and balances are not going out the window. They're just, I mean, that, that still happens. That's still part of the process.
If your sewer is having problems, like Devon said, we need to get in front of your house with a camera and go in and find whether there's break in the line. That's the issue.
The sewer's in the back in Woodbridge. It just happens to be in the back, but yes.
Yeah, well, just what you up against, ma'am, and they're not gonna tell you the truth. What you up against, they just built three complex in District Three. It's too much. We was already having a lot of issues. They built three of them. One on Railroad, one by Home Depot, and one by the Marley Barley. Three of them.
Right, and there are properties in our area, a large acreage next to Woodbridge and on University that can be developed. That's what our concern is.
So-
And since the fifty-one, the apartment, the large apartment complex in fifty-one was done, I'm actually the, the ad-large member for the HOA. So I get around and talk to people a lot. Unfortunately, people don't want to come to the meetings. I wish they would, but we're getting a text system so that we can text them for more information. But they all say that since that particular development was built, they have had some serious issues.
See, I just want to make sure, you're talking about the one that was over the bridge, built over the bridge into the back, the newer one?
Yes.
The one, okay. Alright, I just want to make sure, yeah.
And one thing I'm gonna leave y'all with real quick is a challenge. When you do a vote or you do a veto, I would like to challenge y'all to do it not from a personal perspective, but from a citizen constituent perspective with the administration and the councilmen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine, Monastery two zero eight Camilla Avenue. So I'm gonna assume that we did not have a city engineer when Whitmore and Woodbridge was built, or they wouldn't be flooding. Is that valid? Is that correct? Yeah? Okay, so.
Yeah, none, none of those were built in the city. They were built outside the city and annexed in.
Were annexed in.
So there was no city engineer. They all had engineers, but we didn't have a city engineer.
I got you over all of that. Now, there are the two properties, I believe Mr. Steve Leon had spoken when we were doing the moratorium earlier on, that he had a lot of land in his district. There was a fifty acre plot. Well, I did some digging and those, that land belongs to you. It does. And it belongs to Pete. So it would stand to good reason that you two would vote against the moratorium and that you would veto it. So that's, that's an interesting little thing there. So if the property you used to, or that you do own, Diversity U LLC, they had apartments there initially and those apartments flooded a lot.
No, they did not.
Yeah, they did. Diane lived there.
Ran it for ten years. You don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, of, nobody ever does, Pete, just you. You're the only one. You're the only one. But you're right, I'm gonna let you have that. I'm wrong. Needless to say, I would like to propose that let them develop their land, sell it, do whatever they want to. It's in Mr. Leon's district.
It is.
Unfortunately, ma'am, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But maybe the moratorium can be for District One, Four and Three. Is that possible, Mr. Kudran? Because we don't want any more development. We have empty buildings, they're dilapidated, it looks terrible. Like Devon just said, we just got a buku bunch of apartments. It's just a mess over there. It's a mess on our side. I don't want it.
Well, this vote is a vote up or down for this. If you want to propose another, a council member wants to-
Well, I would like to propose, that y'all propose another one.
Yeah.
And let Mr. Leon have all the building he wants with all the property he has available.
Yeah, and, and I mean, that's a possibility. It depends on how this, you know, vote goes, I guess, on his veto. If, if, you know, if they still, you know, if they still support, support the veto, the other two. You know, you pointed out some good points there, Kristy.
Yeah.
And-
I think your constituents will be happy with that building.
Yeah. And so I appreciate it. And then who's next?
Wait, 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 wait. I have something to say. I'm sorry, sorry.
Hold on, hold on.
Hold on. I, my family owns forty acres next to Woodbridge. That is no secret. My grandfather bought it in nineteen sixty-one. It has been woods and it's wetlands, okay? It is also currently zoned as RS eight, okay? It cannot have multifamily. And as some of these council members also know, I can't ask you to rezone it. It's a violation of ethics laws. I am not asking you to rezone it, and there will never be multifamily built on that under the zoning that it has. So whatever rumors are being spread about that, that land has been in my family for sixty years, and there's nothing on it but trees and bugs and frogs, and the only thing that can go on it, under our current rules, which I respect, are single-family homes.
And is, and, and I'd like to add to that, that you talking about the property, then the only property that they have, or only land available in District Five, other than which is residential.
And Southeastern.
And Southeastern, is along University Avenue, okay? That property along University Avenue, from North Oak all the way to, uh, all the way to Morrison, and then, of course, on the other side of that is Parish. That land, the only, the only, the only plot that I'm aware of that would be big enough to put an apartment complex is cost prohibitive for them to do it, okay? Now, you wanna talk about, you wanna talk about, you wanna talk about drainage, that if you build something that's gonna, that's gonna reduce your drainage? Well, whether we like it or not, Hammond is a growing city, and that land, all along University, all the way to I twelve, all the way to, uh, fifty-five, is gonna get developed with commercial buildings, whether it's, whether it's a Wal-, whether it's a Walgreens, or a CVS, or, or something else. It's going to happen. Is it gonna be apartments? Probably not, because of the price point. And that's it. There is no other areas in District Five that we could build a large apartment complex. With that, you know, all right.
Let's, uh, Dykes, uh, Judge.
I just have one question about what Carly mentioned about wetlands, 'cause there's different definitions of wetlands. There's jurisdictional wetlands now, and that has, has it been evaluated recently as far as what type of wetlands?
It's never had a wetlands servitude or, or study of any type. Again, it's been in my family for, since sixty-one, and we've never looked at developing it once, so we've never had wetlands done. But I've personally gone out there hiking, and you can tell there are some wetlands, and it's also next to a body of water. So there's, there's no secret that that could be an issue if it was ever developed.
Yes, thank you for letting me.
Sure.
And again, it's not zon-, it's not zoned for that development.
Just, uh, just, uh, if you look on North Oak Street where they cleared all that land.
Can you spell, um, say your name and address there?
Uh, Wayne Dykes, nine Silman, Little Whitmore. And, uh, recently, we had, uh, you know, a lot of work done a couple of years ago. I met with the engineers, we had, I mean, our, the head of the department for drainage, and I know he's retired now. And I saw the plans, that was great. It got us better than where we were, other than where Golden meets Silman, 'cause it doesn't drain. Anytime it rains, and that's across the street from you, it overflows across the road because it can't drain anywhere, because there's a main ditch that comes from north and south. And where this ditch runs into it, it tees, it doesn't drain until that ditch is completely drained. And so that ditch fills up every time. Now, fortunately, we haven't had any real flooding, um, since Ida, and I've been about that far three times. So when you talk about development, I'm telling you right now, I don't care how much they've done, it's not enough yet, before we start doing more. Okay? And I've got degrees, it's not, go to a plan and you look at engineers. Engineers are great, they're needed, but it don't always work the way an engineer says it's gonna work. Okay? So we need somebody with hands on the ground, those are the ones, too. Because if you think that flooding is fixed in Hammond, we got a problem. If you think sewage is fixed, we got a problem.
Uh, okay, uh, you're right, flooding is, flooding is an issue, and it's not fixed. When water, as you know, goes downhill, we got a log jam at one ninety, you got a log jam at I twelve, and you got a log jam at LA twenty-two. So when the parish drains, when the city drains, when it reaches, when it reaches those, those channels, and it's too much for those channels to hold, then it begins to back up. And that, and that, and that is, and that is a problem.
Putting more buildings in, it's not gonna help.
High density, high density. So that's what we're doing, high dens-, so I wanna make a comment real quick, you made a lot of comments, Steve, here, is that, yeah, Hammond is growing, Hammond's growing, everything else, they are doing that. But this is not trying to stop Hammond from growing, uh, as, 'cause we have to keep growing. This is, this is just result, this is high-density five-plus apartment complexes that cause a lot of stress on your infrastructure. And if anybody has eyes that drive around this city and look, we have issues. We're not, we're, you know, we're not worse than, you know, we're not the worst out there, but we have issues that we need to work in. They don't happen overnight. And all these big projects, they don't happen overnight. You address somebody right now, yeah, we can't shut down the city of Hammond. This is, this is referring to high-density impacts, which impact all these neighborhoods and all the people. I have gotten zero calls, zero texts, zero anything that is against the moratorium. The voters, other people that live here in this room right now, zero. Not one, but some reason, we still have a pushback on something, we're trying to work and improve people's lives and living and their value assets. Yes, you own your family, you could sell it, somebody else can get it rezoned, whatever. That's irrelevant. At the end of the day, it could be developed or whatnot. You can't do it, somebody else can do that.
Transfer it to a company.
Yeah, transfer it, there's several, there, there, there's several different ways you could sell it to somebody else, whatever.
How's it develop now?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, it, trust me, where I live, it was wetlands at one time.
Yeah.
You can see the Palmettos north of us.
Yeah, so, so there's always, so the bottom line we're faced right now is, we have an issue, we have drainage issues, sewer issues, a lot of things, and there's people work on different things, trying to get it. And there's UDC amendments that I proposed a long time ago, because administration didn't really do nothing during the time of the moratorium is put there. So I start at the ball rolling and getting some on the table to get sit to the planning and zoning. They're looking at it, and this right here is so counterproductive about trying to veto something that is actually, people are trying to work on improving it. And it's not stopping anything from growing in City Hammond that actually, that, that gives value to the city of Hammond. I mean, it, it, it's crazy. I don't think any of the ones, the large complexes, any of them live in Hammond that just got paid. Not, not any of them, I don't think, that I'm aware of. So I, I don't get it, but I'm, I'm glad you came today to speak, uh, Judge at Ices, because it's important.
Well, like I said, I, I mean, I've gotten to the point now, I'm ready to move.
Yeah.
I'm just tired of dealing with it.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous that I'm at that point. But I am, I mean, might wanna move to your district. At least you listen to us.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it, thank you. I'll take you.
So a couple other, a couple other comments.
Ronald Valentine, one nine zero one three oh, Covington Highway. I'm just amazed, I've been attending these meetings now for several weeks, and, you know, these issues are going forward, they've been going forward for quite some time. The council votes, you know, there's three separate councils from what I see, supposed to be one. There's an administration. Nobody's working together. You have an open forum for the taxpayers to come and express their concerns, and people act as if they're being attacked personally. Something needs to happen with this. I'm really afraid for the city of Hammond. I've been here most of my life, and I've never seen this type of conduct in all of my life for the city of Hammond. Maybe you need to have some type of work session. Do you all ever get together? And I work for Fortune five hundred companies, and from time to time, we get together as a unit and sit down and discuss things. Y'all need to do something. It's ridiculous.
I'm glad you said that, Mr. Valentine. I had suggested a long time ago, uh, this year, be exact, that all the councilmen, the administration, we all need to get together, go throw acts, go do something, but we can get a chance to talk, not at one another, but at the board. But you see where that went, we still up here fighting and fussing with one another.
Well, you're not always gonna agree in any body, any, 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 any governing bodies, not everybody gonna be all agreeing at the same time. So, you know, everybody keeps saying that, but you look at a lot of other cities, a lot of other parishes, you go look at some of their council meetings, it's way worse, there's a lot of them out there pretty bad. So not saying that we're greatest, but at the end of the day, yeah, I, I'll never stop fighting for my district. So if it takes me continue up here fighting and, and taking it personally, whatever it is, I really don't care. I didn't come up here to sit up here to look for something to do. I could do a lot other things in the evenings and make a lot more money than what I'm doing right here. But I'm sitting right here because I care about where I live at in a district. And this to be even, even on agenda, wasting time talking about something right now, so silly like this, it's, it's just unbelievable. But it shows once again a management problem that we have in the city of Hammond right now. And if you're talking about the council, it's not the council, look at the administration and the mayor, okay? So y'all wanna keep saying the city, this is crazy. He vetoed something that's trying to help and improve the entire city of Hammond. It doesn't, I mean, it's, it's just crazy right now. We got so many boards of different things working on trying to get things done, you got a lot of money in capillate trying to work on things. It's just, it's, it's, it's silly, it's silly how we're here, but go ahead, Karen, uh, come up to the podium, please. Thank you.
Hi, Karen Wallston, uh, four oh four South Cherry Street. I'm the chair of the Housing Enhancement Committee. And we have a statement we would like to make with regard to this issue. Uh, the city council has directed the Housing Enhancement Committee to move forward on recommendations set forth in the Housing Strategic Growth Study. One recommendation the committee is working on is the development of home ownership housing on vacant and blighted properties in the residential enhancement areas defined in the housing study. According to current zoning, these areas are riddled with RM three zone properties, thus allowing large apartment complexes to be developed. A moratorium extension would give the city more time to address the concerns over the burden of these multi-unit complexes have on the city infrastructure and to improve site development requirements. In addition, the extension would give the Housing Enhancement Committee time to come up with strategies regarding the development of home ownership housing in the enhancement areas. We question the reasoning behind the veto to end the housing moratorium and find it counterproductive to the work that the Housing Enhancement Committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission, as, uh, Councilman De Vittorio, are doing right now to improve housing in Hammond. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a couple of comments, not, not, not towards you, just in general. Part of this moratorium, if y'all haven't, you know, if anybody hasn't read it, part of this moratorium includes things like group homes. I don't know if everybody really understands what a group home is, but a group home is typically licensed by the state, it's typically four to six individuals, and it is heavily, heavily regulated. This helps people with disabilities live and work and be part of a community. Hammond is an inclusive community. And to sit here and, and have someone say that we don't want you in our community, there's a moratorium on you being in our community. As an advocate of people with disabilities, just rubs me the wrong way. And I just cannot go to that point. It's in, it's in.
It's, it's a variance, it's a variance, you can, you can, you can get a variance.
It's in the moratorium. Let me finish. Sam, let me finish.
Go ahead, Steve, you can go finish.
It's also against federal law. Now, they can say it's a variance, they can say you can apply for this. Why? Why do we have to include, why do we have to include these individuals in a moratorium? That's against federal law. We have, they have group homes and special homes throughout the United States. It's part of the Fair Housing Act. We have them all over the city of Hammond. And yet you want to, yet you wanna cut that out, you wanna make, you wanna make those individuals go through extra hoops, you wanna do things that, that's wrong. It's just wrong, wrong, wrong. Now, why that was added in there, I have no idea. And if you think it's 'cause of density, like I said, it's no more than four to six individuals, about the size of a lot of families. Now, you put ten kids in a college hall, you put ten college kids in a house, and no one says nothing, well, that's more density than these group homes are, plus, plus there's no regulations. When I say it's heavily regulated, I mean it is heavily regulated by the state fire marshal, by state licensing. And if at any time that house is not kept up, the grass is not cut, uh, anything, Board of Health, they shut them down, pull the license. So these, you know, these can be your best neighbors. So I really, I truly, truly have a problem with that. Number two, I don't want you to sit here and think that, oh, uh, Steve wants to put a huge apartment complexes all over the city. That's not the case. Where I have the rub is, we started this committee and variations of it in twenty twenty. What we need to be looking at is drainage regulations, building restrictions, permitting, and zoning. That's how you change, that's how you change these things. If you don't want, if we don't want a certain type of building in a certain area of the city, then change the zoning. It doesn't take three years to do that. I have not seen, I have not seen one proposal that says we would like the zoning changed here. I have not seen one proposal that says we need to increase restrictions on building, like the parish did. The parish, the parish, uh, increased restrictions on, on, you know, on land development, making it bigger and more buffer area, and a lot of different things. Why aren't we working on those things? I think it's just time, you know, Councilman De Vittorio said we need to take a pause. Maybe we need to take a pause and regroup and focus on what are we really wanting to do? I've heard all night tonight about multifamily housing. Well, what about, what about the hotels that are being built? That's okay? What about other huge developments that are being done that are not multifamily housing? It needs to all be looked at. It's not just one thing that needs to be looked at. And I, you know, so anyway, that's my, that's my take on it, and I am not, I am not for this moratorium. It has went on. I'm surprised the city hadn't been sued. It has went on and on and on, and it's time to regroup and refocus on what we don't want. If we don't want a certain type of facility or a certain type of, of development in a, in an area, then rezone it.
Well, I'm gonna say this real quick, uh, just to make clear, you know, I wanna, you know, you voted against it from the get-go before the group homes. So you wanna say what I'm gonna say, you have voted against it time and time again, uh, beforehand, so I wanna make that clear. I know you're saying group home now, but that was beforehand, you voted against. I wanna make sure that y'all know that he has voted against it several times before the group home was added to that. And secondly, variances happen all the time. We see them all the time planning zoning. So somebody need a variance, they can come to us, and they, they, they may get, if it's a legitimate deal, they may get to it. I mean, how many applications do we have right now on the table, right now, application looking to do multifamily and group homes right now? How many?
There's one group home, 'cause they're trying to redo it, do it in our subdivision.
Okay.
It's a violation of our building restrictions, so.
Okay.
They're gonna get a fight on it, they do it, even if y'all pass it.
Yeah, okay, so.
I'm on a, yeah, I'm vice president of the, uh, Building Association, so.
Okay.
Our homeowners association.
Okay.
They're gonna get a fight that way, too, so y'all can change that if you want, but they're gonna get a fight, 'cause it's against our building restrictions.
Okay.
Now, Mr. White, put your.
Okay, all right. If it's, if it's, if it's a family home, it's not against your restrictions.
It's multifamily homes.
It's not, it's not considered multifamily.
It's not an individual home, okay? It is a business. And when you say a group home, you act like it's only elderly and handicapped individuals. Group homes can be just about anything.
Yeah, that's why you get a variance. That's why you apply for a variance. That's why you apply for a variance, if you have a, a deal.
But, and I wish we had a government. But, and I wish we had a government right here that could come up with variations and all these rules that you talk about. That's, oh wait, isn't that what you're elected to do? I'm sorry. You're complaining about there's no rules and I want to do this, this and this. That's your job. Do it.
The committee, the committee was doing.
We're still working on things right now. I proposed it and it's still in the works. That's why the moratorium extension is here.
Exactly. I thought the whole reason.
That's why we're trying to extend it. That's your councilman right there.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah. Not, not me. My district loves it and they want more of it and they want to improve it. That's my district, you know? So that's good. You know, I mean.
About 110, over 110 homes in Whitmore, which you throw in across the street, Whitbridge, over 200 homes. It's a lot of voters right there.
It is. It is.
Somebody will be finding out soon.
May I say something?
Yeah.
As a background in urban planning, I just want to let you know, I'm not a practicing urban planner, haven't been for years. But I just want to let you know, one big problem we have, and we've said it before, is we need, as people have said too, a comprehensive approach. You just don't go in and change the zoning, sir. You've got to have reasons why you're doing that and why it's, you know.
Right. I agree with you.
And to do that, you got to, well, but you, a committee like ours, that's, that's not our responsibility.
I agree.
We're public. So, planning, a city planner, we need a comprehensive plan to be updated. It's been 13 years since a comprehensive plan was done. We need that update. You can't update without some, a city planner involved or a consultant involved. A city planner who's hired by the city to, to do it until we can find a city planner to be on staff. Because we can sit here and talk all day, but until we have a comprehensive approach, we're going to have, run into all these problems with drainage and traffic and, and certain developments that we don't want to have. And when you do a comprehensive plan, you involve the community. So the plan comes out from what they want. So I just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
And I think we have continued to follow the city plan that was adopted in terms of what is implemented and how we look at each project as it comes forward. I understand that, but I would also emphasize that, that there was also the statement made, and I've pulled up the GIS map, there was also the statement made that the enhancement areas are riddled with RM3, which is the zoning that allows for large apartment complexes. The majority of the lots are zoned RM2, which would be for duplexes or smaller development. They are not.
Those are all small lots anyway. You're talking about the large parcels.
I understand. That's, that's what I, that's what I did. Those are RS up here in Kipps District. So I would just like to say that there are lots of approaches to planning and to development. And, and I don't want anybody thinking that it's just, here's my permit and then tomorrow you're, you're given access to go build whatever you want to build. We have a very detailed process in the Unified Development Code that was an outgrowth of the master plan that was developed. The Unified Development Code was first adopted in 2014 and has been modified many times. You are correct. The Planning and Zoning Board just had a long session talking about different ways to update the UDC and to make it more accommodating to where Hammond is now. We have worked on hiring a city planner and we're pleased to say that he is supposed to start in the middle of November. So I, I hear the concerns that are here, but I also know that the permit process still affords a lot of review for all of these items. The permit process would still come here for a big development. It is not something that is just overnight granted or rubber stamped for, for how it goes forward.
It does problems and it's already zoned. There's no way about, I mean, you've got to give them the permit. I mean, you're not, you can't refuse a permit if everything is, is everything zoned correctly and everything is, there's, you know, no more torn, there's no issues for them not to do it and it's there. I mean, that's, that's why we're, that's why the groups and I've been pushing it to try to improve the future developments going forward in multifamily. I mean, that's, that's the most highest density and the most destructive things that could cause a community to go through. And so that's, that's what we did. It's in a blanket. This isn't all over city Hammond of any growth. It's particular high density. Just said it, November, we need to, you know, November you might have a city planner coming in there or whatnot. Well, we're, we're here in October. Moratorium's out there going into the holidays. I'm sure she or he's not working hard in Christmas time or anything else, or maybe out of town or whatnot. So family, she's got to get, he or she's got to get, got to go with it, check it out. And we've got some problems here and you can tell we've got problems because everybody's here about it. So go ahead, Mr.
Um, this is probably for a future meeting, but I just wanted to say that there may not be a concern about apartments in our area, but there's a concern about a 44 acre property that's now, there's been speaking of having it annexed into the city. If that 44 acre property gets annexed into the city that's across from our subdivision, that will create major sewer and drainage issues for our subdivision. And as I said, I understand I may be speaking out of turn, but I just wanted to let that be known, that that is something that we need to be, and already are concerned about in our subdivisions.
Thank you.
I just want to know, I wasn't aware that you had hired a city planner. Me neither.
Yeah, me either.
And I think it would have been a courtesy for you to tell us because we have.
Just tonight? Just now after five?
I, I, I'm sorry. I didn't.
When did they accept it?
I don't know. I heard from HR that he has accepted and that he begins in the middle of November.
Okay, interesting. All right, Ms. Ron, go ahead.
Ron Matthews, 905 Delmar Boulevard, Hammond, Louisiana. I come speaking on behalf of the Planning and Zoning for the city of Hammond. I think Lacy mentioned, on September 22nd, we had a very comprehensive meeting centered around the things that Steve mentioned and several people were talking about. I have missed several city council meetings. I don't know, I'm trying to get caught up here exactly what has transpired. However, I will say this. The moratorium was something that I was definitely in favor of, mainly because of all the things we're trying to do to better Hammond. One of the things I want to say is we have a good problem here in Hammond. We are growing. And since we are growing, I think this, this is an opportunity again for us to make things better around the city. When we had our meeting on the 22nd, Lacy was involved and the administration was involved. We addressed a whole lot of issues that need, that needed to be addressed as it relates to the Unified Development Code, UDC, as well as we spoke directly as it relates to the multifamily housing. And I agree with you Steve, we just don't need to talk about multifamily. There's a whole lot of other stuff we need to talk about as well. But we had to start somewhere. I, I would just, unless I'm missing something, Mr. Mayor or administration or anyone, please tell me. I feel that, I know this process has been a long process. However, the city of Hammond, we, you know, in the past, we just haven't done a whole lot of moratoriums. But let me just say this for the record. It's a very common thing throughout municipalities. Look at our neighboring municipalities. Look at our parish. When things start going off rail, that's a tool you use to get things back on rail, is moratorium. It's not because, from my perspective, it's not because I want to stop anybody from doing any development. That was never my intent. Even so, when we passed the moratorium, there's language in the moratorium. If someone has a development they want to do, go for it with it, they can still go for it with it. It may require a, a variance, go through the variance process. And the reason there being is for, for all stakeholders to have an opportunity to look at that project closer. That's all. Drainage, I didn't, I didn't know all about the drainage, like Judge Dyke's mentioned and some of the others that was going on. I heard bits and pieces, but I didn't know it was at that extent. I knew that we had the sewer, we had sewer issues in District 3 drainage problem sporadically around the city. And I look at my own neighborhood where I live in Villa West. We have issues with drainage in certain parts of our subdivision as well. So with all that being said, this is an opportunity. When we had our meeting on the 22nd, we specifically spoke to and about multifamily. We talked about a whole lot of other things. We have a pretty well consensus with the commissioners to want to offer up a recommendation to the council for the city to have a, a board to Architecture Review Committee. That being, we talk about the way we want the city to look, let's put a board in place to help us with that and manage that. We have to take a lot off of some of the people who's burdening, who has the burden of a whole lot of things like Ms. Lacy. And I'm, I'm so glad to hear that we have a city planner potentially starting soon. Because the city planner, working close with our planning and zoning and connected with our council, we can move a lot of things further along the way. But I would hate for us to stop this process where we are. I think we're at a point right now where things that we've been hoping for are beginning to happen. We've been talking about a city planner a long time. That's great news. We have one coming on board. If there is a project that, from the planning commission that I'm not aware of, that we need to look at quickly, I'm, I'm open to a, a quick, fast review, if it takes, you know, half the hours or whatever. Whatever we need to do to help keep the process going. We don't want to, I don't want to stop it. None of the commission. We don't want to stop anybody from doing anything they want to do. However, this is, this was a pause to help us with our infrastructure. And the mayor spoke to it earlier. We spent millions and millions of dollars on our infrastructure around the city. And we're going to have to continue to spend millions and millions of dollars on our infrastructure. As long as we are growing, the infrastructure has to grow with it or grow ahead of it. So that's, that's part of it. Secondly, when we talk about traffic, I look at some of the developments that, that has happened most recently in the city. It's kind of scary. We have a couple of developments where they were built and I pray that we don't have a major accident or anything of that nature. We've been able to, to really push pause on a couple of projects around the city and point certain things out to potential developers that could cause problems down, down the line as it relates to traffic and things of that nature. So we want to look at traffic. We want to look at drainage, continue to look at the drainage and all the infrastructure that's related to the city and related to various projects. Now, in that process, we have taken on a tremendous task to look at the UDC. And Lacy can speak to it. We covered a lot of ground. We, we, you know, the commissioners wanted to meet one hour. I think we stayed, what, four hours? And they committed and they ready to meet again. They ready to get it done and get it done right, so we can bring you all something that we all can be proud of. I look at Madison, Mississippi. I say this all the time. I'm a Mississippian, but, born and raised in Mississippi. Madison, Mississippi took, started this process in 1985. And 1990 is a big turnaround in that city. It is the number one city to live in in the state of Mississippi. Everybody wants to move to Madison. And you go there, people take pride in how it looks. And city of Hammond, I take pride in how the city Hammond looks. I, I'm very, very appreciative of how we, the city looks, and we want to make it better. Downtown is doing a great job. We want to do the same thing, the west side of town, the east side of town, the south and the north. We want to do the same thing to make it, make it a much better place to live. So unless I'm missing something, Mr. Mayor or council or anyone, please tell me. I just don't want to stop the momentum that we have going. Yes?
I would like to ask the, so this moratorium's in place? Yes, I've consistently voted no. I'll admit that. We've, we've thrown in addition of the prohibition of group housing, group homes, boarding houses, all of that. That seemed out of nowhere. We had no discussion of that whatsoever. There's.
Now what, who threw that in?
Councilman DiVittorio.
Where?
It's in the latest extension of the moratorium prohibits, I'll read it to you exactly. It says, final adoption expanded to include group homes, halfway homes, special homes, group living, boarding home and transient boarding homes within council districts 1, 2, 3, 4 and 5. I think that's a problem. I get there's variances, whatnot. You know, a moratorium says, we don't want you, right? Not, we might want you, but here, here's a, here's a variance process for you to go through to figure out whether we want you. And then my bigger problem is that we had no discussion about that whatsoever. So.
I think that's, let that be the point we, we address.
I think if you took that out, I think we've heard more, more conversation tonight than we've ever heard about it. There's been very, very little substantive discussion about the moratorium. We've had people say, we don't like it. We've had people say, we need to do it because the toilet can't flush, right? This, we've had some real substantive issues here. But I still think we have a problem with adding this prohibition of these other items that have not been discussed. No one has said why they're a problem. We don't have definitions of what these, these terms mean. So as it stands right here, I'm not, I can't vote to override this veto because we're throwing in language that I don't even know if it's allowed, right? We, we still, I asked that in a meeting. We don't know if, if that is a Fair Housing Act prohibits us from doing that.
And the current, under the current ordinances, we actually have one application before us right now. And Steve and I, we spoke to it, spoke about it a few, a few days ago. But the current ordinance does not allow, the city of Hammond ordinance does not allow for group homes. You have to have an expanded use in order to allow the group home.
It's allowed in certain.
R11.
RM3 and higher.
RM3 and higher. But in this particular case, it falls outside of that. So that's one issue. But I, I was not aware that that was, was added.
The problem is no one's aware about it. I think Karen has said she didn't know it was in there. So let's talk about it and let's talk about why that's not.
I think that's, that's what we need to talk about, maybe.
Well, let's, let's, let's go ahead and make a motion to override it and, and removing, then removing the group homes.
We're still not talking about why it's in there.
And then remove the group homes, if that's, that's.
Okay, Andre, do we have to reintroduce it?
You can make, let me talk, please.
Okay.
We can make a motion to override the veto and removing the group homes from, from the moratorium. You can, you can make a motion, then you can amend agenda. You can amend agenda afterwards, as long as you have unanimous, and then put that back on there like that.
Introduce an ordinance. So, so this is an up or down vote on this, on this ordinance? Yes or no?
Yeah, and then.
You can amend the agenda to introduce an ordinance, right? Because it's an ordinance. You have to have introduction. Then you'd have to have a next meeting, a public hearing and final adoption. So you could, you could amend the agenda to introduce an ordinance to extend the moratorium, but you could remove the language about the additional group homes and those things.
I think, I don't, I don't know. To me, I think you should be able to amend, you should be able to, there's a process to get that done tonight, if that's it, to amend, take, removing that off of there, if that, if that makes everybody happy. I, I.
You could do it.
No, I mean, I just, yeah.
What I'm saying is it's an ordinance. The difference is with UMX, you can do that by a resolution.
Yeah, right.
You can do that in one meeting.
Yeah.
An ordinance requires an introduction. Then you've got to publish it. You've got to advertise it. Then you have to have a public hearing on it and then a final adoption. So what you could do is you could amend the agenda to add an introduction of an ordinance, to extend the moratorium, but just leave out the language about the additional group homes, halfway homes and those things. I think that's your.
Well, I mean, it seems like, it seems like group homes is, is heavy on Steve's mind right now. So, you know, we can, you know, I mean, that seems like the issue right there because it, it seems like he may be open into, to extending the moratorium if they didn't have group homes in there.
I said, I don't know what Steve said.
And Mr. Ron, I want to bring something to your attention.
Sure.
I don't know if you're aware of it, but in Kipps District, they have a halfway house over there. And you know what's so funny about it? The community didn't even know it was coming.
Wow.
So I'm saying that to say, without that planner,
Right.
with all this paperwork being shuffled
Right.
and don't nobody know where it's at, I guess what? Don't residents got to deal with all these people on drugs
Right.
that's not from the community? And so you know what? I am concerned about a halfway house in my district. Because guess what? We already have issues with drugs. And now you bringing people on drugs in the district? Yeah. But I talked to the people in the community, so those are things that I'm quite sure Mr. Sam was talking about when he put it in there, because you might not want it in your district. But I'm scared to have those type people in my district.
Right.
So it's not about handicap. Oh no, I'm the first one implement, put handicap toys in the park. They never had them in the park before. So when it comes to handicap, I got three nephews in wheelchairs. Ain't never been able to go to the park in their life. 21, 25 and 26. So when it come to handicap, I have nothing against. I'm quite sure nobody have nothing against handicap, but when. against, I'm quite sure nobody have nothing against handicap. But when you got ex-drug heads moving next to my house-
Right.
That you renting out, and you talking about a fire marshal that you never see? Yeah. Those are things that sneak in Hammer that you don't know nothing about.
I think we can deal with those parallel. I think the issue centered around the moratorium, I think we can, we can continue with the moratorium. If we were to remove those issues and then take these issues up with the planning and zoning, the halfway house, group homes, all those issues. We need to take that up immediately so we can address it and make recommendations. We can bring a single recommendation back to the council.
You can introduce that next. We can make the motion to override the veto and bring, introduce, introduce the ordinance to, to clean up the, the group home, however you want to clean it up.
Yeah, we need to have time to really dig into that.
I mean, Ron-
Within the next meeting. Yes.
The delineation, when y'all get to talking about that, is, is it licensed by the state?
Right.
If it's not licensed by the state, you know, that's what we, that's what we talk-
Steve, I want you to come to our next meeting also. You brought up some good points.
I mean, that's what we talk, that's what we talk about.
I want the rest of the commission to hear.
We're not talking about a bunch of people to get together and jump in a house and call themselves something.
Right.
We have no, nobody has regulations over that. We're talking about state licensed homes.
Sure.
That's what we talking about.
I'm very familiar with group homes.
Yeah, and that doesn't need to be part of, that doesn't need to be part of a moratorium.
So it's in your hands, council. But I'll just say this, Mr. Mayor, I, I think that we've made some good progress working with Lacy and the, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Most recently in September was our last meeting. Again, if there's a particular project or a developer that has a specific project that they trying to get going because of financing, I know financing is hard. I'm a builder developer myself. I understand how that works. We'd be more than happy to work, to work with him, he or she, whomever, to help them with a, with a project. If it's, you know, it's between meetings or whatever, special session, we'll do whatever we have to do to help them move their project along. We're not trying to stop anyone. However, we have made some good progress. I know it's been a long time coming. As Councilman Gonzalez said, we've been working, dealing with this a lo, long time. However, I think things are, have come together with the hiring of the city planner. Yet to meet them, but looking forward to it. With our last work session, planning and zoning, we covered a whole lot of stuff. And the, and the thought process is, is really good. We getting a lot of good things coming out of that.
And everything sounds good you're saying, but all that still takes time. So you can say all that you want, Mr. Ron, about this, making the right direction, but it doesn't happen overnight. So y'all haven't finalized anything yet.
Right.
And it's still going to take discussion when you bring it in.
That's, and my point is, is that we need more time to fully implement what we set out to do.
So-
I know we wish we could have done everything in thirty days. It didn't happen. We knew it was going to be a year. We didn't know it was going to be two years. We didn't know it was going to be as long as it is. However, a lot of things has happened. But I think if we continue to work together, council, administration, planning and zoning, we can make this, this work for us all. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening, council. Do you have a definition of group home that's in the charter? Mr. Andre?
On the charter, maybe.
The UDC, is there a definition? But I'm pretty sure if there is. Ms. Lacy, is there a definition?
Sorry. Andre and I had looked at this prior. There are different definitions in the back of the UDC. If you give me just a minute, I may be able to pull them up.
Um, while you're looking for that, I'm pretty sure in the definition, there is not a reference, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, there is not a reference to persons with disabilities. Mr. Councilman DiVittorio stated that Councilman Leon was against the moratorium from day one. And for Mr. Leon to sit here tonight and play on the emotions of people by saying group homes and the Fair Housing Act, and we're going to be sued as an excuse not to approve or override the veto, is somewhat I have a problem with. So I sat there and I looked, I said, well, let me see what is said about group homes from the government. Because he mentioned the federal government, right? So there's a joint statement of the Department of Justice and the Department of Housing and Urban Development titled, Group Homes, Local Land Use, and the Fair Housing Act. You can look at it, justice.gov. And it simply says, the act, the Fair Housing Act, does not preempt local zoning laws. Okay? However, the act applies to municipalities and other local government entities and prohibit them from making zoning or land use decisions or implementing land use policies that exclude or otherwise discriminate individuals with disabilities. So if our definition, the City of Hammond, does not specifically say prohibit individuals with disabilities, there's no need for a variance. There's no need to deny a moratorium because whether or not there was a discussion, there's no violation of the Fair Housing Act. No one can be sued. For a council to vote three to two, and we have our mayor veto it down, and you have a room full of people that's still against it because we do not have a comprehensive plan in place, is not good leadership. How many people do you represent in, in the HOA, ma'am?
Um, there's about ninety-two properties.
Ninety-two properties.
And there's, I think, a hundred.
Ninety-two and a hundred. And Ms. Karen, how long have you all been working on the Housing Committee?
Well, this, this smaller group, it's taken from recognition, about four or five months.
But there was two, Tracy. There was actually the Housing Committee that started probably about two years ago or so, and then it transferred into the Enhancement, Housing Enhancement Committee, which is supposed to, for about four or five months, supposed to really look at that consulting report. Yeah.
Okay.
So we haven't been in effect that long.
No.
So why were we in that when we're making progress? I've heard you and I've heard Mr. Ron Matthews mention smart growth. And that's what we want. We want smart growth. Why would you inundate us with more housing? And Councilman Leon, your constituents are saying this. Why would you inundate us with more housing when we have an infrastructure issue?
That's a question directed towards the mayor and, and Steve.
Yes. And so Ms. Monastair said, maybe there's an ulterior motive. So maybe there's an ulterior motive. But my councilman voted, along with Councilman DiVittorio, and along with Councilman Andrews, to extend the moratorium. And you need a vote of four to override it. So how you vote speaks to your constituents. That's plain and simple. Thank you.
And how many in here are against extending the moratorium in this room? How many people in here against the moratorium extension in this room? I mean, it's right there, the answer, answer's right there. I mean, it's, it's, we shouldn't even be talking about this right now. Anyways, all right, well, I think it was clear on that. I, I make a motion to, to override the veto.
Second.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
No.
Councilman Leon.
No.
Well, there you go. I, that'll work. Well, I'll, I'll be, uh-
Write that down.
Yeah. Yeah. No, it's, it's, it's done.
Why don't you introduce an introduction to extend the moratorium without your group home language?
That's what we just talked about. I thought that's what you were doing.
No, you would extend this. You can introduce, then I would introduce that to address that. But Tracy already answered your lawsuit question.
Okay, you're not trying to accomplish your goal if you don't really do that.
Ma'am, I think, I think if, I think if we go back to Andre's comment earlier, giving us a little guidance and direction as it relates to this, the up or down vote. So Andre, at this point, is there further, let you get through your phone there.
Well, I was looking for definitions. There's no definition of group homes. There's no definition of halfway homes.
I had group homes just up there, and then I took it down.
So, so, but, but to the point, if you want to advance, right, advance the discussion, you could make a motion to amend the agenda to introduce an ordinance to extend ordinance number two-two-five-six-two for an additional one-hundred-and-eighty days from the date of final adoption, period. And then just leave out the issue of group homes, halfway homes, special homes, group living, and boarding home, and transient boarding houses.
So I don't, I don't, Frank DiVittorio, I don't know if, I mean, it's still, I think y'all are still on the item. Haven't moved on yet. Andre, why couldn't they override the veto and then, which would keep the, keep the moratorium in place, and then introduce an ordinance tonight to remove group homes from it? That way, a moratorium stays in place, but the process of getting group homes out starts immediately now. And so the next meeting, it could be removed.
Well, because they've already voted.
No.
Can they amend the agenda to go back to that item?
Let me- How about, I make a motion to amend the agenda to extend the moratorium for one-hundred-and-eighty days, leaving out the language of group homes. I don't-
Just to extend the moratorium for an additional one-hundred-and-eighty days from the date of final adoption of the ordinance.
And I'll, and I'll second.
And that requires unanimous vote.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Councilman, this is a motion to amend the agenda to introduce an ordinance to extend the moratorium. But it excludes the language about the group home, halfway home, special homes, group living.
Yes.
Okay, so now the agenda's amended.
Make a motion to introduce as, as amended, or, yeah, as amended.
Introduce the, the agenda item to extend the moratorium for an additional one-hundred-and-eighty days from the date of final adoption.
We have, but we need a second.
Need a second.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
So the public hearing will be at the next meeting and then up for final adoption.
Thank you, Ron.
You're welcome. And Ms. Lacy, let's put that on our agenda to take up the group homes and halfway houses with planning and zoning at our work session. Thank you.
All right.
Somebody has something to say.
All right, go ahead. Yes, ma'am. State your name and address.
Shirley Basilia, One Amar Dive, also known as Lake Amar, where it rains. Anyway, my question is this. There is a hearing scheduled for Thursday for a variance for a group home in our neighborhood. And I'm trying to find out if that's still going to be going on, based on what, um-
Yes. That's a planning and zoning meeting. And so that public hearing will still, will still have.
Okay.
The planning and zoning makes a recommendation. So they'll vote on a recommendation that then will come to the city council.
How do we, how do we get all the information about this group home and just-
There's actually a packet that's linked online. If you want to write down your email address, I'll be happy to send it to you. But it's under, let me show you. I can show you real quick, since I have it already up. So this is the, the planning area of, so if you go under Government, and then you go over here under, and you click Planning.
Okay.
It'll take you to this department website right here. And then under the Planning and Zoning Meetings, right here, is a link. And right here, it has the full agenda for October twelfth.
Okay.
And then all of these have links when it, when it loads. Hopefully it'll load.
Okay.
I'll be happy, I'll be happy to send it to you if you'd like, if you give me the email.
Okay, thank you.
It's right here. Yeah.
All right. Anyone else have any other comments on that? All right. Thank you. All right, let's, let's move on.
Introduction of an ordinance, introduction of an ordinance to approve a request by John Montesino Sr. to revoke the right of way of Bronner Street, which was never constructed by the City of Hammond, according to survey by Max Bodeen, Inc., dated eight, five, two-thousand-and-twenty-three, Lacy Landrum.
This was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission back in September, and it was unanimously approved to revoke this right of way. This is for a street that was never constructed. And the, in how it was originally constructed, there would be multiple lots that would feed out onto the street. Since the Montesinos have since taken their parcel and basically taken in all of the lots, the, and built their house on that now, that street is no longer needed. That right of way is no longer needed because there will never be a street constructed there. They access their house from Montesino and go into their driveway. So there's no way to actually subdivide this property unless you tore down their brand-new house and then went about some sort of subdivision later. So the, the street was there truly to provide access to various lots that could have been developed. But since they have taken all those lots and combined them in an L shape, there is no longer a need for this. We have the survey attached. We have the agreement between the property owners about how the land will be given over. And there's a map, both with the property development and with the zoning included in your packet. It's linked here.
All right, anybody in the public audience have anything to say? All right. Make a motion, introduce?
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Public hearing is set for October twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three. Resolution number one, discussion of a change in the city charter for the election of the police chief, Councilman Wells.
All right. Thank you. President Kip and I, we were working on some things as far as what all it takes to, to elect a chief. And Andre, could you help me on this here, please?
Sure.
Yeah. All the things that you recommend and what was all said.
I'm not sure what you're, I'm not sure what you're referencing, Councilman.
Okay, from the beginning, when this was first brought up?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what the requirements are of being a chief?
Yeah, so the big, one of the big things that was discussed would be, what would be the qualifications for the chief? And that would be, what kind of education, what kind of experience in law enforcement? That would be one issue. The other issue is residency, and that is, would the chief, an elected candidate for chief be required to live in the city for a certain number of years before the election? Or would they be required to live within the city? So those were two questions that needed to have some discussion. So it's, it's the qualifications. What would be qualifications in terms of experience? Education would be one. And then the second would be residency. Would a residency be required? Those were two of the issues I had questions about.
Okay. As far as what Councilman Kip sent you, what was the, the residence and how long?
Well, what he sent me originally was exactly what I had submitted.
Okay, which was twenty-four months?
Yes. You had, he, that the, to qualify, you had to live for twenty-four consecutive months in the city limits.
Okay.
Prior to qualify.
Okay. Now, far as education wise?
So education, he had one, there were two options. One option was, you had to have a bachelor's degree in business administration, public administration, or related fields, and twenty years of experience in law enforcement, with fifteen years having administrative or supervisory responsibilities. Or a bachelor's degree or associate's degree in criminal justice, police administration, or related fields, and fifteen years of experience in law enforcement, having administrative or supervisory responsibility. So it's either-or.
I think hyperlinked on the agenda shows some changes that Councilman Andrews, I don't want to speak for him, but he did send this to us by email.
He didn't communicate with me. That was changes he was-
So he had, he had a public meeting with, for his district. I was there, and there was some discussion. And then after that, he sent an email to everyone where he made these changes. So it looks like, under the residency, it says one year prior, and may live within sixty-five miles of the City of Hammond. Again, this is under the assumption of what he said is what he meant. And then the qualifications, it looks like he was suggesting to remove the twenty years of experience with a bachelor's degree and just keep the only bachelor's degree or associate's degrees with fifteen years in law enforcement. That's the only changes that he has on this that he sent to everybody.
I didn't, everybody except me.
No, you didn't get this. Okay. It's hyperlinked.
Just want to make, I don't know if, I mean-
Just want to make, I don't know if, I mean, it's up to y'all, Council Wells, anyone else in the council? I mean, if he's not here, I mean, do you want to, do you want to table it, wait till he gets here maybe? Or, or y'all fine with discussing that, you know, with him? I, I didn't, I didn't know he gets, I didn't know he was going to be sick tonight, so I don't know what, what y'all plan? What's your thoughts, Councilman Wells?
No, we can discuss it now.
Okay. I mean, I'll, I'll, you know, if, if it passes, or if it goes far by the, by the majority, my concerns was just, I'd like to add in there, and I don't know if it was on AMV or looked at, but a term of, only two terms, for, for that police chief, if, you know, if it gets elected.
The way it is now is three.
Yeah, I, I would like, yeah, that's what I'd like to circulate, no more than two, two terms.
How would you suggest, this is very lengthy charter change. We've got, you know, he, two, two terms, this one says three terms. How are we gonna build, make this sausage? Because there's a, there's a lot going on here.
As we've done with others, like with the, with the food trucks and others, you, at some point, you've just gotta put something on the table. And it may not be what everybody likes, but you've just gotta put something on the table, and then you take a vote. And the vote could be to amend item B to have two terms instead of three terms, or three terms instead of two terms. But, you don't want to have that meeting four hours long, so you'd like to have some consensus on a lot of things, understanding there may be two or three or four maybe issues that may not be full agreement. But at some point, you've just gotta put something on the table.
Yeah.
And this may be close to the point of doing that.
It's just a discussion, so I mean, I, I just said what I, what I had to say, and I mean, anybody else has any, Councilman Wells, Councilwoman Gonzalez, anything to say about discussion?
Yeah, we've heard from people in the public, you know, say that make it no experience whatsoever, just like the sheriff. I personally think that's a bad idea. We've heard from people that 15 years of supervisory experience would make it difficult for most people, like at least for in the Hammond Police Department, where it takes about 16 years to make sergeant, where you can get supervisory experience. So you're looking at people who are close to retirement age. I think that, I think 15 years of experience is a bit long. Our current charter says five years. I know it's, if you have an associate, it's a certain amount of time, if you have a bachelor's, it's a certain amount of time. It's fine, but I think that.
It's lesser, it's lesser.
I would say you maybe go towards a lesser amount of time, just so that we're not limiting the pool of potential candidates who would want this office. And then, I guess I'm also a little concerned or confused about the absence and disability part of this, and where that comes from, where the, the council can remove the police chief if there's some medical documentation.
Yeah, that, that parallels the charter on the mayor.
On the mayor.
So all of this, a lot of this language you see in here, what ifs.
Okay.
It really parallels what's there for the mayor.
Does anybody get to do that for the council members? Is it in there for the council members too? Okay.
Well, it's different being a mayor and a council member, because the council can still function with four members. But it's hard to function without the one mayor, so it really just patterns off the mayor.
The, also, I think there's an issue, I've raised it before, I'll raise it again. The mayor should not have a veto over the budget of the police department. So if the council's setting the budget, which we currently do, I have no problem with that, I think that's a good idea. Um, I've said before, if you had a council who didn't like the elected police chief, or there was politics involved, and, and the council got together and decided, you had four members who wanted to quote-unquote "defund" the, the police department, they could do that, and the mayor couldn't veto that. So I think that's a problem, politics-wise, that, I think that government takes two sides, the executive and administrative, so.
Well, remember, you're creating a new administrative side.
Right.
I mean, the, the, the police chief is going to be a new administrative side.
Budget is what I'm talking about, not so much the, the actions. So that, that's a perfect example. Say, we didn't like the actions of an elected police chief. Well, that, that's politics, we're talking about the budget, and then we'd be inserting politics into the budget. And we have people in the department who rely on the funding that they use to protect us. So I think that's a problem, in my opinion.
Yeah, so the theory is, do you basically give the police chief a total amount? Whatever number that is, and he spends it as he wishes within the department. Or do you have line item, just like we have now, line item by category, salaries, equipment, supplies, vehicles, all of that? This is drawn to have a line item type approach, where the council would approve line items within the departments, and not just handing over one dollar amount to the police chief and let him or her spend it as they wish. The thought about the mayor not having a veto, that's up for discussion, certainly.
Would purchases from the police department also still be required to be approved by council?
No, not, not as this is.
So if they were ready to buy vehicles, they're, we don't have to, they don't have to come here and ask us for permission?
Correct, not in the way this is written.
Okay. What about setting the salary and weight of the, the, his employees? They're still city employees, but.
It would be within the, if the, if the council has line item budget authority, then you would just have a category for salaries, and it'd be up to the chief to figure out which particular salary would go.
Anyone from the public, you have any discussion?
I still have a couple more.
Okay, go ahead.
The Kip pointed out six, 65 miles in the, within, live within 65 miles of the city of Hammond. Since I was at his meeting, there were people who were talking about not closing the pool of potential people who want to run, you know, maybe making it where, and maybe that's coming from him, someone suggested anybody in Tangi who perish, or at least close to. I know the current is five miles within the city. And so, if we're making them live only within the city limits, now I certainly get the argument, you want them to be in the city, but should, you know, we're, we're really limiting the pool. And that was, I know that that was feedback he got, so which is, I'm assuming why he put must live within 65 miles of the city.
Do you know why he had one year prior? Do you know what that was supposed to be?
I think that's to stay, to have, have lived one year prior, so.
Okay, but after he's elected, then they could move out?
I guess, I don't know.
That wasn't clear.
Yeah, because I think if he was here for that, I mean, that's where he can explain what he wanted.
But the 65 miles, I mean, you need a chief that's gonna stay in the city limits, that's just point blank.
That's a bit long.
It, it don't make sense, you know? You want a chief to stay in the city limit that have something invested into the area. Because I want a chief that I can go knock on his door and tell him this is the issue that I'm having in the area. But if he stays 65 miles, remember, it's taxpayers' dollars. He got a vehicle he taking to and from home, and everywhere else. So that's something you have to take into consideration, so. And to me, I look at it far as like with the mayor and the city councilman. One-year resident in the city, one-year resident in your district. So those are requirements that I will require from a chief of police, staying in the city limits, versus 65 miles, eight years. I think that's good in law enforcement as a chief of police, because now he get an opportunity to, hopefully, he know us and get to meet us. And eight years is enough time for him to do that. You're right. So those two things that I see are, the clerk of court. The clerk of court budget, the city councilman vote on the clerk of court budget. So we're not gonna sit here and make it seem like that the police department not gonna have a budget. They gonna have a budget. And just like with the clerk of court, and anybody else, they have to come before the city councilman. And so we can't give no chief. He can go buy cars anytime he want, he can go buy this anytime, you can't do that. And, and we all know that, that don't make sense. It don't make sense to have city councilmen, and we supposed to be over the budget. But yet, we supposed to be steward over the money. And yet, we act like we not stewards over the money anymore. The budget is controlled by the city councilman, not the administration. The administration submitted to us, it's up to us to accept it. And so, we're getting confused on what we're supposed to do and what we don't suppose to do. We're over the budget, and we need to be good stewards over the budget. So that's what I say, Mr. Andre, that we can't give no chief and just put him over the money, and he can do what he want. That go malfeasance, he gonna end up in prison, so we don't want that.
You're talking about the line item?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's the way, that's the way, Shrek.
Yeah.
The, um, the, we don't have anything like this in the current charter where we give someone money in their own budget. The, the clerk of court, the marshal, all of those, we give them money to add to their budget. We have no say-so over their actual budget. And even with the DDD, it's, we don't give them money, they raise their own money. So it's not our money we're giving to them. There's no, is there anybody who we give a bulk of money to and they get to do anything they want? I think that's a bad idea. But the point is, is I don't think that the mayor, there should be some special no-line-item veto here. That, that's my only problem with that. I'm, I'm absolutely fine with us figuring out what items the police chief can spend his money on. I just don't think that it should only be up to us. I think it should be, you know, part of a democracy, where the, the mayor, who's elected by the people, has a say-so as well.
Well, the chief will be elected by the people, too.
True. Well, that would just mean give him a whole bucket of money, but we're not doing that.
I agree. So I can go back, the, the charter actually, as it reads today, only requires six years' experience, two in positions of administrative or supervisory responsibility, with a bachelor's degree, or with an associate's degree, you have to have eight years' experience, two of which in progressively responsible positions, administrative positions. So this, that was originally recommended, is, is a good bit more, a lot more, than what the charter now requires for the police chief. So I can put something on the table, I can't tell you, promise you, it's gonna be exactly the way everybody wants it, but I can, I can blend this in, put this together, it can be, you know, up for introduction at the next meeting. And then, once it's introduced, now you can make amendments at the introduction, but you basically would go, you know, if you want to make an amendment, you just say, uh, you know, move to amend item D to change it to read as follows, and then you take a vote, each one, each individual one. And then at the end, you'd make a vote whether to have it or not. But this is the time to set the rules. This is the charter, this is not an ordinance. This is the charter, and the only way you change the charter is by an election.
And it's good, and I recommend that, Mr. Valentine said it, you know, more than anything. We can keep doing things on a personal level. The city not gonna grow, the city gonna be catching a lot of hell. And we could just sit down and talk, and take the personal, the feelings out, personal gain out, and just sit here and talk, and let's get this here going, because we not getting nowhere. You mad at me, I'm mad at you. We need to sit down and talk, because we're not getting nowhere. And in my district, and I always have to talk about my district, we have an issue. I want a chief that the community can sit down and talk to. I want a chief that can do community service. You know, I brought up Florida Parish, I brought up the young lady with the kids dancing. A lot of stuff can be prevented, if we just had the right people in place. Crime affect everybody. We're not getting nowhere if we keep putting it off, we all know we got a problem. Just, just take one thing off the administration hand that they don't have to worry about talking about anymore. The people can have a say-so over the chief. That's all I've been asking for.
Well, you want to, you want to draw something up?
Yeah, so just so you'll notice, so you're not surprised, what I'm gonna do is, I'm going to change what is there to say, the mayor would have a veto authority, change it to two terms, not three terms, two terms, that the chief would have to live one year prior to qualifying. And then I'll just pull off the existing charter what the qualifications were. Just keep it like it is right now. But if you want to change it, it can be changed.
You get the bullet points and present it, and then we can make amendments in the meeting, or whatever.
Go down the list, if you want to make amendments, but we gotta put something on the table.
Yeah, leave it like that, what, what's the requirements that are now, let it be simple. And we all know what they have on the paper now.
All right, moving to the next. It's just a discussion.
No, no, it's just discussion only.
No, yeah, I'm sorry about that. Does anybody, Tracy can come up, anybody else has any comment, please come up after Tracy.
I just have one, since Mr. Andre is gonna introduce it, or projected to introduce it. Is there a way that you can have it coincide with the US presidential election, and not the mayor-council election?
That's up for the council. I, I'd propose that you had the, the chief being elected at the same time the mayor and the council would be voted on, but that could certainly be changed.
And the rationale for that is, you typically have a larger turnout, and you would have more engagement from the citizens of Hammond during a presidential election than you would a mayor-council election. That's just a thought.
Now, are you talking about the vote, whether to elect the chief, or if it passes when the chief gets elected?
If it passes, yes, yes. If it passes, and the people say, yes, we want an elected chief, then it can be held during a US presidential election. Because you'll have more engagement.
That, that raises a good thought, though, if, say it passes, then you have four years till the president, so we'd have to have a special election?
I mean, that's just a thought I'm throwing out to you guys, I mean, I don't.
I'm just gonna keep it like it is, and then we can vote to amend it if they want to amend it for something. It just seems to me it's cleaner, because then you've got another city election that you gotta pay for off, off-cycle. But, but that's something to think about.
Anyone else in the public? Thank you, move on.
Number two, a resolution to approve Family Dollar Store, number 21636, at 125 North Morrison Boulevard, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401, to obtain a permit to sell packaged high-low alcohol. The owner is Family Dollar Store of Louisiana LLC, Lacey Landrum.
Family Dollar actually reached out to Casey Deagle today, and said that they would like to table both this one and the next one. They want to be sure that they have a representative here for the meeting, and they were not able to secure that for tonight.
All right.
Make a motion to.
Let's take them one at a time.
Yeah.
Table, make a motion to the table.
Number two.
Yeah.
Who is the second?
Not yet, we don't have one yet.
A second.
Yeah.
Call for a vote, no, just call for a vote on number two.
Need a vote for number three, resolution.
Oh, no, just vote.
Call a roll.
Oh, roll. Gotta get back in time.
You're good, you're good.
I'm out of practice, I'm gonna stay out of practice.
You're good.
Councilman Leon.
Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Number three. A resolution to approve Family Dollar Store, 28439, at 1355 Highway 190 East Hammond, Louisiana, 70401, to obtain permit to sell packaged high-low alcohol. The owner is Family Dollar Store of Louisiana LLC.
Make a motion to the table.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Number four, a resolution to approve Thai Green Leaf located at 1905 West Thomas Street, Suite S, Hammond, Louisiana, 70403, to obtain an alcohol permit for a restaurant. The owner is Thai Green Leaf, Inc., Lacey Landrum.
There are no real changes to this, the only change that they are doing is they're moving from Suite R to Suite S. Because they are physically moving their location according to their ATC permit, they have to come back before you as a council to get permission to shift that license from Suite R to Suite S. I do not know if there's an owner, very good, okay. I know we, I know we had reached out today, and I didn't know for sure, but, so the owner is here, if there are any questions for them.
I want to ask the administration a question.
Sure.
So far as the, the alcohol and food, what is the, the ratio?
60/40.
Okay.
So at most, the alcohol sales cannot cross over 40%.
Okay, and food, 60%?
That's correct.
Okay. Who go out and monitor this?
It can be audited by Laura Hammett, who is our finance director, or it can also be audited by the sales tax collectors, which works through Donna Drew's office at the Tangi Schools.
Okay, when the last time this ever been monitored?
I don't know when this restaurant has been.
No, no, not this restaurant, permanent, period, you know, for any restaurant, because see, I'm seeing this a lot. And when I was dealing with it, someone would come out, you know, and that's why I'm asking. So now, is anybody going out, when the last time that anybody ever looked at the receipts?
I can get that information for you first thing tomorrow, but I cannot tell you then, until that question tonight.
Okay.
Is there a process, though, is there like a city, I'm curious, he brought that up, is there like, so many of y'all hand-pick or something? That goes throughout the city to do that? So what is really the monitoring? So, what is really the monitoring, like, system, or somebody has to report you to do that?
Typically, it is more based on a complaint system than it is necessarily, but I can double-check all of that and have that answered for you in the morning.
Okay.
And the reason I ask that question? I don't see the purpose of having apartment heads, department heads, of you going to speak on behalf of everybody. That's why I asked that question.
Well, we have asked many times for the questions to be sent in. We know that department heads are happy to meet with you at any time, they're happy to respond to emails and phone calls, but we're really not going to bring back department heads until we can ensure that this is a harassment-free zone.
Well, good thing about it, that's what you said, but we the city councilman, and you know what? If we going to do it like that, in my opinion, I don't see the purpose of us keep paying apartment heads a hundred thousand dollars, and they can't come before the taxpayers and explain stuff to the taxpayers and to the city councilman.
There are a lot of other meetings in other jurisdictions that don't have department heads that attend them. The administration is here, the mayor is here, we are happy to answer questions, we're also happy, and we have said many, many times, to please provide those questions in advance so that we can bring you all the information so that you can make a good decision at these meetings.
Okay, Ms. Lacy, I'm not going to go back and forth with you, but that's the same thing with Sam with the housing, with the trees. When Sam put the tree mortar mown there, and see how y'all went back and forth with Sam, but nobody never sent Sam those questions. See, what's good for the goose?
I did send him those questions.
Yeah.
I sent a lengthy email to all the council members and the city attorney and the mayor about the tree ordinance. And I have been told at many of these meetings that I should be quiet, because it is a council meeting, which implies that maybe the council is here to speak and the employees are not here to speak.
Well, we're not going to go back and forth, Lacy, here on this, and it is a council meeting, and I think the council, if they want department heads to come here, that could be just something that the council may want to present. They can, they may not feel that way. The rest of the council may feel like not, but he brought a good point up there. The department heads, if they're running their departments, they should know in and out, and I don't really think the administrator is going to know all the time exactly, well, shouldn't know exactly every day aspect of every department, because you're not the department head that I know of, of every single individual at departments, therefore, that'd be a lot for you to keep up with if you were actually every day the department head for the street, sewer, police department, everything else. So, you are a minister, and that's great, and we glad to have you, but, you know, I think some of these questions should be able to be answered by that department head. So, if Laura Hammett was here, she's, is she the department head?
She's the finance director.
Well, that's who does audits?
Casey Dagel would have been here to present an alcohol license in the past.
Okay, so he would be able to tell you pretty much, answer the questions about how many audits or whatnot?
Perhaps. He may not have, have that information at his fingertips. That's why it's important, since the council agenda is typically set on Thursdays, it's important for all of us to take our time to look through that. We work really hard as staff members to provide all of these packets of information for everybody so that you can make really good, reliable decisions.
And then, Lacy, I'm not going to go back and forth to him and say one more time, but a good department head is going to know what's going on in there, in their, in their department as far as that.
We have many good department heads.
And they're going to know, and so, and so they, they should know, and, you know, in the business world, a manager knows what's going on.
I am well aware.
In, in his industry, and he's, he may not know exactly how many, how many bags of chicken went bad in, in a, in a year, but he'll probably give you a bad, a restaurant manager will probably give you a good idea that probably lose about ten a year or so, so that's what answered the questions, so...
Can we get to the department here?
But anyways, uh...
Are we going to vote on something?
Yeah, I'm the president, I'm running a meeting tonight, Carly, so...
I know, I'm just...
Let me run my meeting, and you can do what you need to do, so, I appreciate it. So, go ahead, Lacy.
I think it's up to the council to vote on it.
Good, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Aye.
Number five, a resolution to approve annual alcohol renewal for 2024, Lacy Landrum.
Before you is a list that was also just handed out, it's also linked up on the council agenda. It's a list of all of the current alcohol permits that are up for renewal. This is our annual renewal. There is one hundred and thirteen businesses on the list that are within the city limits that have alcohol type of licenses. There are not any new businesses on the list. In addition, if we had approved the three prior, that would bring our total to one sixteen, but since we tabled two of those, we would now be looking at one fourteen. All of these businesses have been before the city council to receive their renewal and to receive their initial license as well. These are all due around December first with a thirty-day grace period, so they become delinquent on December thirty-first, 2023. That's why we do this early, is to make sure we give the notices and that they have time to get all their paperwork together. There are several things that we ask them to provide when they're doing their renewals that includes both sales tax clearance and other notarized documents as to who the owners are and what type of business they're operating. The city renewal time is different from the state's renewal time. The state typically renews in August.
Anyone from the public have any comments?
Need a vote.
Just need a motion, need a motion, Sam.
Need a motion, Sam.
Need a motion.
I'll be abstaining for the vote, so I'm, I'm not going to make a motion.
Motion's approved.
Now, we need a second.
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Abstain.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Abstain.
Number six, a resolution one accepting a nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen-dollar grant from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program to purchase portable radios for the Hammond Police Department and authorize, and number two, authorizing the mayor or his designated to complete and sign related documents, Lacy Landrum.
This is merely to accept the grant for nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars. There is no match on this grant. This will enable the police department to purchase nine to ten portable radios. And both linked up are the resolution itself and the contract.
Anyone from the public? Come up to the podium, please.
I have a CNO twenty on non-carbon road. I just wanted to know, who did y'all contract with to buy the radios? Was it Motorola or some other company?
They have not contracted with anyone yet to purchase, because they have to accept the grant first before they can go get quotes for radios.
Thank you. Any, any other questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lee, Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon? Number seven, a resolution one accepting an eighteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cent grant from the Patrick Lee Bulletproof Vest Partnership to purchase new and replacement body armor for Hammond police officers. Two approving an eighteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cent cash match from the Hammond Police Department, and three authorizing the mayor or his designated to complete and sign related documents, Lacy Landrum.
This is accepting grant funds. This is an annual grant that we receive. There is a dollar-for-dollar match required, and the match of this will come from the Hammond Police Department budget. This will enable the department to purchase somewhere between thirty-three and thirty-four bulletproof vests.
Any questions, any comments from councilor public?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Number eight, a resolution one supporting a submission of a thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-two cent grant application to the fire, to the Firehouse Public Safety Foundation to purchase a digital fire extinguisher training system for the Hammond Fire Department, Lacy Landrum.
This is something really cool. We have never had anything like this, and this is relatively new technology. It's basically to practice how, how to use a fire extinguisher. There's a board that it comes with that simulates a flame, and then people can actually direct a laser fire extinguisher to the board, and if they point in the right direction and use that piece of equipment correctly, then it will extinguish the fire. So, the fire prevention team plans on taking it out to schools, different living facilities, whether those with seniors, apartment complexes, businesses, or even just maybe a tangy chamber event, so that you can learn how to use a fire extinguisher safely. This is just for the application of the grant, it is not, we have not yet received it.
Any comment, questions, anybody? All right.
And I'll say, it's great for October, because this is fire safety and fire prevention month.
Great. All right, second?
So, Sam's second. Okay, Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
The next, we have reports, and mayor will be first.
Uh, this week is southeastern homecoming week, so if you would, get out and support your local university. Go Lions!
Anyone else has anything to say? Any reports? I want to make a comment real quick. A while back, I brought up a chovan where it turns in Old Baton Rouge Highway, in that little area that curve. Had a couple calls, some close encounters, some head-on kind of collision from being real dark at night on that curves. I, I would really like for, I know a while back, I brought it up and kind of got lost probably in, in the mix of things, but I would like to get maybe some, some real reflective, maybe paint, that might be a state, somewhat of a state-city kind of mix in that little area road, so I'd like to get, you know, the process moving on that, maybe get a light or something added there, and, and some, some signs that reflect good at night in that curve to, to help the public safety in that little area. And if y'all can at least give me an update sometime in the next couple of weeks on, on kind of the process, and, and what do we need to do to address that? That would, that would be great. And, and then since, also, I'd like servitude to be looked at right there on the corner of Morris and Linden right there, the two big pine trees, have had a bunch of accidents right there in the corner, right there on, let's see, would be Linden and, and Morris Avenue, there's a large pine tree right there, and it's a one-way, and when they, people turn it looking right, you know, it could obstruct that, the view a little bit, and anything we can do in that little area to help public awareness of, of the cars coming flying down that road, because they, they come pretty fast, and so, anything we can do with that little intersection, with that large pine, it would be, I think, in the best interest of, of the public safety, so I'd appreciate looking at that as well. Anything else, Councilman Wells?
Yeah, thank you, Vice President Sam. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you all, you and your group, going out getting those trees cut in District Three, that was in the certitude, and with the park where the new playground equipment at, all that mud is still getting on that playground equipment, on that court. So, I know I talked to, uh, Mr. Pete, what's his name?
Ace or Desiree?
No, I talked to Ace, and I talked to Desiree. The guy that worked the equipment, I don't know his name right now, but he said they was supposed to put some, uh, rain gutters, supposed to come all the way down, but it's, we're getting mud on all the playground equipment from coming on the court. And thank you again. That's it for me.
All right. Uh, anybody else, make a motion adjourned?
Lord, I ain't write this much in, I don't know how many years.